Want to call the November 20th, 2025 O'Fallon City Council Workshop to order. Roll call, Katie?
Mayor Hennessy?
Present.
Councilmember Wechsler?
Present.
Councilmember Roth?
Present.
Councilmember Boyer?
He's excused.
Councilmember Thompson?
Present.
Councilmember Cuskella?
Present.
Councilmember Kuen?
Present.
Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Councilmember Cook?
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Mark her in attendance when she arrives. Folks, your head of agenda in front of you, what's the pleasure?
So move Wechsler.
Motion by Councilman Wechsler, second by Councilman Cook. You're jumping the gun. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Discussion on council agenda items, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you. And I know tonight we're going over the process of the agenda, so I'm probably even jumping the gun there, too. But I had a question. How do we decide what goes on the consent calendar? Is it just like things that are easy votes, not controversial? How's it?
Mr. O'Keefe?
We have in our ordinance criteria for the... Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Our code establishes criteria for use of the consent agenda. Generally speaking, they are matters that have already been budgeted, are within budget, and were essentially approved as part of the budgeting process. And for matters that may have been discussed with council in previous, those kinds of things go on there.
Yeah, and so if I wanted to take something off the agenda, the consent calendar, to vote on separately?
The process is when that is called, any person, any member of the council can ask that any matter be either further discussed or removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, because yeah, I was gonna, number 11, it was with the roadie exteriors, I was gonna ask to have it removed, just because I wanted to vote on it separately. And I promise I won't be a broken record about it, it's, you know, the thing with the bids and everything, the number of bids, which I did want to say, I appreciate the email and the comments and every... I haven't gotten a chance to read it yet, but I really appreciate you all going to that effort to go through each point and make comments about that. So, thank you.
So, just to let you know, when it comes time for the consent calendar, you're just gonna say, you know, I'd like to make a motion to remove item resolution 11 to vote on separately.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilmember Taylor, I appreciate you mentioning that. The feedback that you provided gave staff the chance to really dive down and look at what we do and why we may not do the things we don't do. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Any other things on the council agenda items? Say none. They have a motion second to approve the city council workshop meeting minutes of October
Thompson?
Cuskella.
Motion by Councilman Thompson, Councilman Cuskella second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next on the workshop discussion, the agenda process, Ms. Bacher.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here to present about the agenda preparation process. State statute requirements covered under chapter 610, open meeting records. Tentative agendas must be posted 24 hours before a meeting. Notice must include the time, date, and place of the meeting, and how the public can attend or observe. Agendas should be in a format that reasonably informs the public about the matters to be discussed. Exceptions. In the case of emergencies, as much public notice as possible must be given and explained in the minutes. The next slide covers how O'Fallon does their process. The City of O'Fallon currently succeeds these standards. Agendas are typically posted before 5:00 PM on Monday preceding the Thursday city council meeting, which is more than 72 hours in advance. In addition to the agenda, a completed agenda packet is also posted, which includes a staff briefing sheet, the draft legislation, and background materials on each agenda item. These materials are often extensive and are not required to be posted under state statute. This promotes public transparency, but greatly complicates the agenda posting process and the assurance of accuracy. So, the agenda process. Each department submits their own agenda items, and the routing varies per department. Once staff submits an agenda item, the item is routed to their supervisor, department director, then on to administration staff. On average, five to 10 people review each agenda item. There is a set routing, however, staff does have the option to adjust the routing as needed. The agenda process has expanded over the years. Addition of staff and departments has lengthened the review process. All agenda items must go through the routing process. Agenda items are sent back to staff for corrections, and then those items go back through the routing process. Also, the city clerk ensures current ordinance and resolution templates are being used by staff. Here is an example of an extended review process. A project manager submits an agenda item, and it's regarding a police department project. This agenda item goes through the police department staff, along with the engineering staff, so this lengthens the agenda process. So, you can see, I know it's probably not the greatest to see, but this agenda item was created on October 30th, and the very last date for approval was November 30th. So, it's a step-by-step process. So, once it clears one person's inbox, it goes to the next person. Wrong way. Internal deadlines are set, however, factors affect the routing of the agenda items. Staff could be offsite, in a meeting, at a conference, staff off work for the day, staff assisting the public. Agenda items are sent back multiple times, requiring them to go through the routing again. And then also, last-minute agenda items submitted due to various reasons. Council packets have increased over the years. They range anywhere from 400 to 1,500 pages. The Planning and Zoning Commission meetings are held the first Thursday of the month. Planning and zoning agenda items are submitted Friday morning after their Thursday night meeting. Administration staff doesn't receive these agenda items until late Friday morning to begin the review process. The amount of P&amp;Z items vary each month. The city clerk reviews the agenda item throughout the week for any items that have completed the routing process prior to Friday. The agenda process is a daily task, however, working ahead can result in an item being deleted from the draft agenda. Then the city clerk is required to renumber the legislation, whether that be ordinances, resolutions, or category numbers. Once all items have been approved, then the city clerk prepares the agenda, including each legislation item, adding bill numbers to ordinances, letters to resolutions, along with making any additional format edits to ensure accuracy. Goes back to creating the templates that we have used recently and ensuring staff is having the right verbiage in our ordinances and resolutions. Here's a screenshot of internal what the agenda looks like for staff. Staff provides the information, and at the very bottom is the clerk's box. That clerk's box is what is on the paper agenda that you guys see. So, that box comes from the resolution title and the ordinance title. Staff attaches the documents needed for each agenda item, then the city clerk goes in, once that item has been through the routing process, to update each ordinance and each resolution. Here's an example of routing as well. This routing was started on September 26th and ended October 3rd. So, it's just a long process to get through each staff member. And each staff member plays a vital part in reviewing these agenda items. Here's an example of a returned item, agenda item. So, items could be sent back multiple times, requiring them to go through the routing process again. So, we can't just skip on to the next person. It needs to go back to that person to correct. So, it does lengthen. This one started on February 13th and went to February 20th. This is an internal screenshot of what my agenda looks like on Friday. So, this is a workshop. Red text indicates the agenda has not had final approval yet. Blue text indicates the agenda has had final approval, so it's gone through that approval process by staff. This next screen, the only difference here, this is a council agenda item, so you see that light green indicates final agenda edits have been done. So, I have physically gone into each of those items and confirmed that the clerk's box is correct, and the attachments are accurate. So, this is just kind of an overview of each item. I just wanted to give a whole screenshot of each agenda item, so that's old business I was able to get through. This is just still showing Friday, that we're just waiting for that stuff to get through the approval process. This screen shows a plum highlight, indicates items are pending and needing additional work, but it has been through the approval process. We could be waiting for PD to complete that background check, just so that way we can make sure that it can go on the agenda. Same thing here, blue and red text. Another screenshot, just finishing up new business. Here is local municipalities and their posting dates. Cotleville posts on Monday for a Wednesday meeting. Darden Prairie posts on a Friday for a Wednesday meeting. Lake St. Louis posts on Wednesday for a Monday meeting. Numaly posts on Monday for a Tuesday meeting. O'Fallon posts on Monday for a Thursday meeting. St. Charles City posts on Thursday for a Tuesday meeting. St. Charles County posts on Friday for a Monday meeting. St. Peters posts on a Monday for a Thursday meeting. Walden Spring posts on Friday for a Thursday meeting. And Winsfield posts on a Thursday for a Wednesday meeting. And here is the last slide, just so you can see planning and zoning deadlines as well. So, it kind of follows a similar pattern. And that's really all I have. I just hope that you guys understand a little bit more. I know it's a quick overview, but it is a lengthy process. We have it in place for a reason, for staff to approve each item, so...
Okay. Michael?
I would just add one thing, I'm not sure Beth is aware of this to say it, but last Wednesday night, Lenore Tozeraldez was here until 1:30 in the morning, finishing up that agenda to make sure it got through the routing.
Okay. Lisa?
Beth, I just wanted to thank you for putting this together.
Thank you.
It was a good overview, so I appreciate all of the work that you all do in doing, putting these together.
Thank you. I have to compliment Mike and Lenore for giving me some guidance, so I appreciate their assistance.
Beth, the question I have is, when you showed the red and the green and all that stuff...
Mm-hmm.
If it stays red, it does not get to our agenda?
Correct. And then it gets removed. So, if there's red routing, then staff is still deciding what to do with it, and it could get pushed to the next agenda. So, then if it gets pushed and it's halfway through the agenda item, it's item number four, then everything underneath it has to be adjusted.
So, and then that's Friday, and so on Monday, you come in and make sure everything is in the blue and make sure everything is, so there's no...
Correct.
...stakes on our agenda.
Correct. Over the years, agendas have been less accurate. I don't want to point fingers at people or anything like that, we're all a team. But I feel like my key skillset is accuracy. I'm very confident in what I produce as an agenda packet along with staff. But I am the stickler. I'll catch if an "and" isn't with a semicolon and things like that. Like, it's the basic format that some people try to sneak by me, and I catch it. I don't catch them all, but I catch a decent amount of them, so... But yes, Friday is how I spend my day. Unfortunately, we do have other staff out, things like that, so I don't want to be that person knocking on their doors all the time, but I do call them and say, hey, this has been in your inbox for a while. Where is it going? Is it getting pushed? Things like that. We just need to know.
So, basically, on Friday, you go through it, and then on Monday, you go through it and make sure everything is right.
I double-check my work.
And normally, it's posted usually by noon or something on Monday.
Monday, correct. It is. This past agenda, this was a big one, so I had the majority of it done on Friday, but I went back through Monday morning, double-checked, found a few of my own mistakes, and was able to fix that. So, then that way, we wouldn't have to post the agenda, amend the agenda with those mistakes. We have gotten a more thorough process.
So, when you have to amend the agenda, you have to take...
The agenda down, unpublish, unpost, unpublish, unfinalize, throw it back into the system as we're editing a new agenda. So, it's time-consuming. Every time that you have to amend an agenda, it's not just a quick button that you push.
Or when you amend it, it has to go through all the approval processes?
No, not when I amend it. It's just internally for me. So, yeah, it stays with me. But if somebody needs to add an item, and we're adding it, so like, November agenda's already posted, and they want to put something on the November agenda, then they would put it on the December, but I would have to move it from the December agenda to the November. So, that item would still have to go through the routing process. It would have to complete the routing process before I post it on the November agenda.
She's not posting it until it goes through the whole routing process?
So, I was gonna say, thank you, too, for putting this together.
Of course.
Yeah. So, I was one of the ones, like, this agenda, like, I need the weekend, you know, like, every... And then I got this agenda for this month, and I was like, oh, what was I complaining about?
Yeah.
But that's what I was... And I did, I know we talked about it, you had, you know, I was like, well, it was really being held up a lot, too, by P&amp;Z, I know. And then we were like, well, but about once a month. And I gotta understand, like, keeping on the routine and wanting to keep all that. But what about these ones with, we just have these one a month?
These ones are long ones.
Because I was like, this is what we were talking about. I was like, I was up late last night, like you were saying, 1:00 in the morning, trying to get through it, so like, these...
It is a lot. And we want to provide the council and the public the most accurate information, so we don't want to create a rushed process. I know previously it was posted on a Friday, but it was staff hunting down other staff and saying, hey, get this through, get this through. So, it was just rushed, and unfortunately, there were errors, and I feel like staff has corrected those errors. And over time, allowing this Monday posting has been more transparent.
You know, I think Debbie and I, you know, we were here when the Friday, and there was a lot of mistakes on those agendas, and then when we get the agenda, the mistakes and everything else. But I think coming out on Monday now, there is very, very few mistakes, if any. So, I know Debbie was there, and Jeff's been there with, on Friday agendas, and seeing the mistakes that were there, so... Ms. Ragsdale?
Thank you. Beth, I appreciate you putting this together. My biggest concern is, especially when you look at an agenda like this, the number of things that we, as elected council members, have to vote on, and most of us have jobs, even though it might be available sometime during the business day on Monday, we're not getting it until Monday night, when we get off work. So, that really only gives us Monday night, Tuesday night, and Wednesday night to read. And as you mentioned earlier, there could be 450 to 1,500 documents. Three nights is not enough time to read all that stuff. And I really feel like we really need the weekend to be... And when you look at some of the larger cities that you had up there, most of them, even if their meetings are on a Monday or what have you, most municipalities are getting them on a Friday for a meeting the following week. So, while they might only have three business days, they still have the weekend to review this. And that's my concern, is the things that we vote on, we wouldn't be voting if it wasn't important, and it's, it makes us rushed, and it leaves us open to potentially taking a bad vote, because we don't have time to really research the items that are on this agenda. I mean, tonight's agenda being seven pages is a prime example. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Amanda?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, like, this agenda, for especially these once-a-month ones, there's not a possibility it could get a little earlier than those. I mean, that's what I said. I got this one, and I was like, whoo, I'm not even complaining about the other ones, you know?
I know. It's a lot, and I do my best all day Friday to try to get that agenda out, but unfortunately, I'm not the only person in the routing process. It's all staff working together to get it to you, and I know the frustrations.
Well, I understand what Linda and Amanda are saying, but I think I'd rather have a complete agenda with very, very few mistakes than an agenda with a lot of mistakes. And then having to get the agenda, and then having to remove stuff and everything else.
But when we don't even know what's on the agenda that we're going to be voting on, I mean, I would rather have something to at least start to give me a heads-up. I mean, you know, we've got how many resolutions on here, and we didn't know about any of these resolutions until Monday, so there's no way.
Okay. I need some kind of direction here, folks. You can just sit here and be quiet, but I need some sort of direction.
Well, Mayor, Beth, thanks for doing that, too. Myself, I like the way it is now. I do have time, and sometimes it gets cramped, but I try to watch the planning and zoning meeting a week ahead of time, and I got an idea of what's coming up, what's the priorities and all that. That's what works for me. I don't know what it works for other people or not, but I'm good with the way it is now.
Mr. Kuen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, being the second-longest councilman up here, I've been through a few of these. I also have a quite busy day job that keeps me out of town quite a bit sometimes, as well as a second part-time job that I work on the Saturdays, and I'm not working my full-time job. So, I understand having a lack of time. However, I would point out that while it is important to look over the entire agenda, first-reading items, you know, you can look over, and you have two more weeks typically before it's a second reading, which is why anytime we try to do two readings in one night, I'm like, gotta give me a good reason. You know, we need the time to look this over, to think about it, to talk to interested parties and that sort of thing. Resolutions are obviously a little more difficult, but resolutions are usually a little, how do I say? I'm just gonna say thinner as far as material that has to be reviewed. It's usually a bid or something that's attached. You know, consent calendar, same thing. It's generally, we're glancing through, okay, so-and-so wants a liquor license, we're passing this, that's a budgeted item to be passed on. I would say, for me, yeah, I get wanting more time to review, and more time is always a good thing. I would further say, excuse me, to Councilwoman Ragsdale and to Councilwoman Taylor, that if you need time, throw your hand up and ask to table an item. I will bet this council will grant you that time. You know, in fact, as many times, there hasn't been a whole lot of times I've seen something asked to be tabled, but I'm trying to remember a time when the council as a whole said, no, and I'm coming up blank. So, I get, you need more time, definitely more time for some items than others, but I can't ask staff to try and pull off a miracle. They'd literally be, you know, giving us our agendas by Saturday morning at 8:00 AM because they worked all night, and I can't ask staff to do that. So, if I can help in any way, as far as, you know, understanding something on the agenda, I usually start to read mine on Tuesday morning, before I get started on my day job. I'm usually done by sometimes 10 minutes before this meeting starts, but nevertheless, I'm happy to answer any questions if I can help. And I'm sure, being the senior-most member, Councilwoman Cook would be happy to do the same. So, my opinion is, we keep it the way it is.
And I can tell you, when the packet was coming out on Fridays, I don't know if any of you know, but how long that city clerk was here on Friday? It was not 5:00 o'clock when she was leaving.
It wasn't midnight.
It was 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night when that city clerk was leaving, to make sure that...
And sometimes later.
And sometimes later, depending on the length of the agenda. So, you know... Ms. Ragsdale?
So, some of these items, is there some reason that they can't be on the agenda for the following, so that we can go back to having the agenda on Friday? And these things that are taking so long, there's a deadline, you missed the deadline to have it on this agenda, so it's gonna go on the next one? Is there any reason we can't do that?
Michael?
Thank you. A lot of it is lost opportunity, so it may be that we were waiting until the bidder got the signed contract back to us. We may have been waiting for legal to have an opinion on a contract or something like that. I'm always hesitant, because frankly, in my six-and-a-half years, I can't count the number of times I said, just push it to the next meeting. If they can't get it done, by golly, this is ridiculous. But there almost always is a compelling reason that it's taking so long, which turns into a compelling reason why, in this instance, it can't wait another month. So, when it's every two weeks, slightly better, but these November and December meetings especially, if it doesn't hit this meeting, and there are people that there's an economic impact to that company or that developer or whatever, so I do my best to always try and make sure it gets on when it's supposed to. I would frankly love, and the folks on the side of this room hate to hear me say this, I would love to just push it back and say sorry for you.
And I understand that.
The downstream effects of that.
And I get that for the November and December meeting, when we're only having one, but the other 10 months of the year, can't we do that so that we can start getting our agendas back on Fridays, so that we have time to review them?
Not speaking to the Friday part, but just speaking to the, you've passed the deadline, sorry for you. It's those downstream effects that every time staff has a compelling reason why it needs to be on this meeting, but we need it on this meeting. So, you can direct the clerk to do whatever you wish the director to do, but my comfort level of saying, sorry, it's gonna get pushed to the next meeting, it takes a very good reason for me to do that to something, because, again, of all those downstream effects of whatever that push does. So, if you want it on Friday, that's a direction for your clerk, but I'm hesitant to just kick stuff off the agenda.
Lisa?
You had said that you wanted an action. Is there, are we...
Well, you know, as I said, I know there's a few folks up here that want it on Friday, and I've heard from at least two, and myself, that's three, to leave it on Monday. So, as Mike said, this is best works for the city council. And basically, if the city council says, we want it on Friday, then she's gonna have to, and staff and her's gonna have to get the agendas out on Friday. If this council says, no, we leave it on Monday, then we leave it on Monday. So, you know, as I said, I know there's a few folks up here that want to put it to Friday, so I think Beth is just trying to figure out, okay, what am I doing? Mr. Cuskella?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, was here when we received them on Fridays. What I did notice, when we were getting them on Fridays, we had a lot of corrections and a lot of amendments that came on Monday and Tuesday. It was like almost reading the agenda again. We see a few amendments here and there now, but to compare a meeting like tonight's, where the agenda is this long, and then say, maybe we'll just push it, just force them to push it to the next meeting, that's another month away. You're gonna impact city services at that point. I don't think it's a good idea. I think leaving it on Mondays is perfectly fine. We all give up our time, whether it's on the weekends or the evenings and in-between meetings at work. I have not had a problem reviewing the agenda. It seems like we're putting a hardship on already-stressed services by forcing it to be done on a Friday rather than on Monday.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. It was nice having it over the weekend, but I found myself pushing it off because I was busy on the weekend, too, so I ended up not getting to it till during the week. So, and it was, it is nice getting the agenda and knowing that it's not gonna keep it... keep getting changed. So I really appreciate that, because I remember when you, you came to me a little bit and said, what do you think about going to Mondays? And, and we talked about it. And this, this is kind of exception, these, these kind of, you know. John, what you said about watching P&amp;Z, I'm the same way. David comes to us, this is what's coming up on P&amp;Z, if there's, and then I go back, I watch P&amp;Z, so I have a heads up on what's, especially on the, on the first readings. Saves you a little bit of time, you don't have to, and then, like you said, it's first reading, you've got another two weeks to, to go through and check it further. So, you know, we have a lot of new people on here. As you're on here a little longer, you kind of learn what to look for, what you can kind of look at next time, what you need to dig into, what you don't, so Beth, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
We're not finding mistakes, we're not having to change things. It was nice getting it on the, having the weekend, but again, then you just procrastinate, so it doesn't really matter.
Thank you. I take great pride in being accurate, I, I do.
And I'll guarantee, I will second that. Ms. Amanda?
Yeah, so I, when I'm thinking about it, my biggest thing with wanting it on a Friday was because, I like, I'm a rule follower, believe it or not, and I know Mr. Snowden and a lot of the staff has asked us to, like, if we have questions from the agenda, whatever, specifics, like, give them a heads up before time, you know, ask those questions. So that was my big thing, like, getting the, those questions in that, you know, before so staff can be prepared during the meeting. And I think that was my biggest struggle, was trying, you know, with having it on a Monday. I'm like, I can't read it this much ahead of a time, and, but I just kind of let that go. So I adjusted, you know, I, there's many things that, yeah, I'm thinking of the questions right before the meeting, so, you know, I, I'm for keeping it on a Monday if y'all want, but yeah, I'm not gonna be able to promise getting questions in, like, asked and, and all that, so.
No, and, and, and just let you know, and, and that's fine. To me, is if you have the questions before the meeting on Thursday, if it's Thursday afternoon, you email Mr. Snowden for the, with the questions, at least he can get it to staff to have your answers. I'm not saying, you know, you come in Thursday night with, you know, unbombarded with questions. I think we just want the staff to be able to have time to get your questions answered instead of staff going, well, I have to get back with you. At least, you know, if you gives them, give them a couple hours, I would say, because all he's gonna do is forward it to David or Stephen or Wade or whoever it's gonna be. To be clear, I might be able to answer it. But as I said, you know, it's, yes, we, he would like to have as much time to do the research, but to me, if, as long as we get those questions, you know, even if it's during the workshop, you give him the questions, staff got, has two hours to, to research it and get you, get you the answers.
And I'm glad they all, that Councilmember Kuhn said, too, if we're just not prepared or feel like we're not, to table it, that y'all are gonna agree, so that's good to know, right?
I, I'm just saying, you can make the motion, but you gotta have, you're, you're only one to vote, so, you know, there's, there's, there's eight other, nine other people on this council that can say, sorry, I've already done my research, I'm moving forward with it, so.
Yeah, I understand. I don't speak for the entire council. I'm just saying, historically, I have not seen anyone who's asked for more time, at least not to recollection, and maybe there is a time or two, but it's been nine years, so I don't remember many times where that's been denied.
Steve? Do you have something?
Oh, yes, sorry. You guys got on a tangent there, and I lost my, my thought. As the liaison, council liaison for planning and zoning, I'm always available for questions for things that are on planning and zoning. I, I, too, have to watch those meetings with Bill sitting right there next to me, so please reach out if you have questions for anything that, that came through planning and zoning, I'd be more than happy to answer and provide whatever feedback the, the public had on that as well.
Okay. Anybody else?
I do have one comment. If you know you're going to table an item, please give me a heads up, especially if it's on second reading, because I draft all the legislation and I print it with the ordinance number on it. So if you know that that's going to be tabled or potentially, otherwise, I have to go back upstairs, reprint everything after the meeting for our city attorney and our mayor to sign. So just a heads up about that.
If it's one of the first items on new business, then she's gotta change everything, everything else.
And I know a heads up can't always happen, but it'd be ideal just to give me a heads up so I can be prepared.
Nope. So, again, everybody's good with Monday? Okay. I got, I got, I got an eight to one. There you go.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Melissa, Grants and Assistance Program update?
All right, good evening, thank you so much. I am here to present the Grants and Assistance Division overview. So just some background information, some of you have already heard this before, but the City of O'Fallon has been a HUD and CDBG entitlement community since 2004, and this CDBG is designed to help communities with their greatest community development needs. All projects must be designed to principally benefit low-to-moderate-income households. CDBG is one of the longest-running HUD programs. With CDBG, there are three national objectives. You do have to meet at least one of those objectives, and so we have low, moderate, slum and blight, and urgent need. So here in O'Fallon, we focus more on that low-to-moderate category. We don't have any areas that constitute slum and blight. Urgent need, quite frankly, is not a very, it's not, it's rarely used, just because that's more in events like catastrophes, floods, and then there's also a stipulation that other funding is not available for that. So if you do have a flood, you have FEMA that comes in, so urgent need is, is rarely used. And so with that low-to-moderate category here in O'Fallon, we focus on that limited clientele and housing categories. These are the current income limits. These are established by HUD yearly. These figures were released in April. So we look at that 80% area median income, so for example, if you have a household of four, your gross income cannot exceed $89,100. So some of the questions that we get is, how do you know what programs to offer? And so one thing that we have to do is our consolidated planning. So this essentially is our strategic plan, our backbone. We complete this every five years through the St. Louis County Home Consortium, and that consortium consists of the cities of Florissant and O'Fallon, St. Charles Urban County, St. Louis County, and Jefferson County. And so information is gathered through the analysis of impediments, and what that involves is a consultant that will come in, and they will look at various factors of the community. So they'll look at socioeconomic, they'll look at access to opportunity, housing profiles, they engage the community with surveys and to get feedback. We also have a citizen participation process, so we have public hearings. We try to at least offer three, sometimes even four, and we place those strategically throughout the city at various times and locations, just to garner citizen comments and support for that. So we have one here at City Hall, we usually go over to the Senior Center, we'll have one down in South O'Fallon at O'Day, and then we also usually present at the continuum of care meetings. And so we also consult with area nonprofit organizations, social service agencies, and then we take a look at what we're already offering, and if that is, if that is working, if it's continuing to work, we're gonna continue to do that. Funds are then used to address those community needs, and it includes strategies proposed to address those needs, and then we also bring it to council for your approval. Every year, we must also complete an annual plan, so this begins at the every new fiscal year for that specific year's allocation. So each year, our allocation amount may vary. And so this also supports that consolidated plan. We also do that citizen participation process, so we have the public hearings, and then we also present this to council for approval as well. Then at the end of the year, we have our consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, or our CAPR, HUD loves acronyms, that is why, that is a mouthful, and so this details how the funds are spent each year specifically. How many households did we serve? How many rides were given through that? So you can see an actual breakdown of how those funds were spent, and then we also come up and present that to you as well. So this is our current programs. We'll break those down a little bit further here. So our fiscal year 2025 allocation amount is $338,193. We have not yet received our 2025 allocation yet. Now that the federal government has reopened, at least through the end of January, that process will begin to move forward. And so right when we get that allocation, 20% cap, we are capped at 20% for administration and planning. And so that goes towards 60% of salary and benefits, travel and training, our NCDA membership, COC, continuum of care support, office supplies, postage, basically the day-to-day operations of that division. We also have a 15% public services cap, and with our public services, we offer two programs, our emergency homeless prevention and our transportation program. So as you can see there, for our next year, our cap is at $50,728. The rest of that funding is then sent over to our housing programs, so we have our exterior, interior, and mobile home repair programs. A little dive into our public services, our emergency homeless prevention program provides assistance for low-to-moderate-income O'Fallon residents on the verge of homelessness or disconnect to remain in their homes through financial assistance with mortgage, rent, and utilities. We can provide up to $1,500 per household, and funds may not be used for more than three consecutive months' worth of assistance. We contract through the care service that administers this program for us. We have our transportation program, and so this is for eligible O'Fallon residents for necessary medical appointments within St. Charles County. The program provides up to 18 one-way, which equals nine round-trip rides to use throughout the year. Residents may qualify in one of three ways, by age being at least 62 years of age, by income, as those income limits that were shared earlier, and qualify as low-to-moderate income. So our provider breaks those down as one-way trips, just because going there counts as a trip, coming back counts as a trip. And that's, can be helpful, especially for our riders with dialysis, those 18 trips, if they have somebody that can pick them up, it helps kind of extend those trips a little bit. And then we have our home repair programs. So our home repair programs are structured to keep residents safely housed in their home. This is not for remodeling, this is not aesthetic updates. These are used to address structurally defective components in a home that can affect the health and safety of that homeowner. So our exterior home repair is structured as a one-time grant, up to $10,000 for eligible repairs such as siding, roofing, dangerous tree removal. Interior is structured as an interest-free, five-year forgivable home loan, up to $7,500. And so this requires that homeowner to remain in the home during that five-year time period. If they do move or transfer ownership within that five-year time period, they would be subject to repayment for the amount that they have borrowed. After that five-year time period, they're still in the home, that loan is forgiven. And so we do a lot with HVAC, that is a popular repair that we have. We also do weatherization, plumbing, electrical, interior accessibility needs, and then we have our mobile home repair program. So this is also structured as a one-time grant, up to $3,000, and this will assist with skirting, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, and things of that nature. We also have some programs that are funded not through CDBG, so we have two programs that are funded through Home, and then, of course, we have our Project Home, so we'll get into those. So Home, as I said, is federally funded through the St. Louis County Home Consortium. They hold those funds there. However, we do dictate how we want those funds to be spent. So for fiscal year 2025, we want to use those to test for and, as necessary, mitigate radon levels in our CDBG home repair programs. So there are new environmental regulations in federally funded homes that are going through that program. We do have to test for radon and then mitigate if needed. We do have our down payment assistance program, which is in the interest of a interest-free, five-year forgivable home loan, up to $10,000, towards closing costs and down payment for purchasing homes in O'Fallon. The home buyer must complete home buyer education and one-on-one counseling provided by a partnering housery, housing counseling agency. So you'll see there that that existing home cost limit is $267,000. That's challenging. Each week, we do receive an email with houses that are listed at or below $267,000. As of the 14th, last Friday, we had nine active listings in O'Fallon that were at or below that price point. So you can see, we've got five condominiums, three single-family, and one town home. So because of that, the supply, the, that housing cost limit, we were challenged with those down payment assistant funds. So we had to come up with another way to utilize those funds and being good stewards of those funds and meeting that community need. And so what was created was that affordable rental activities. So in 2023, staff began working closely with St. Louis County to out, reallocate those funds to address those community needs. So in 2024, a notice of funding opportunity was issued, and in February of 2025, $620,540 was awarded to the care service to purchase and rehabilitate three units in O'Fallon. They will also provide supportive services and case management for long-term housing success, and I am happy to say that we are currently securing their first unit, which is a condo here in O'Fallon, so we are very excited about that. Then there's the Home ARP, which is, of course, federally funded through the St. Louis County Home Consortium. We issued a joint notice of funding opportunity with the St. Charles Urban County. Funds were awarded to the care service to purchase and rehabilitate six to eight units within St. Charles County for a total of $1,805,984. That will also surprise, excuse me, support services and case management will also be provided with that. With the ARP, there are qualifying populations that have to be considered with that, and so that would be individuals experiencing homelessness, at risk of homelessness, domestic situations, high risk of housing instability and cost burden, and then veterans and families that include a veteran family member that meets one of those preceding criteria. We then go into Project Home. So this is funded annually by the Project Home Golf Tournament, and this is for providing assistance to low-income homeowners with necessary home repairs, emergency repairs, accessibility needs. So this sort of serves as our stopgap. So if we are out of our CDBG funds and we get a call, you know, my mom's HVAC is out, can you help us, what can you do? We can tap into these funds. We can also use that, so if code enforcement writes somebody up, instead of having those punitive measures, we can come in with these funds and offer support and help with that. So these are just some of the ways that that funding has been spent through the years. As you can see, HVAC is a popular project. In 2023, '24, staff recognized more opportunity to do more to keep people housed, and so the nonprofit organization grant program was developed, and so this was grants to support eligible organizations to specifically benefit O'Fallon residents with emergency home repairs, code violations, safe egress, and just everything to keep our O'Fallon residents safely housed. And so we offered that over to two eligible organizations that responded, Restore St. Charles and Delta Center for Independent Living. So Restore St. Charles is using the funding for their safe egress program, so they do a lot of work in our mobile home communities, and they do construction of new entry or exit structures, decks, platforms, accessibility ramps. And Delta Center for Independent Living, they are enhancing their equipment exchange program, so they work a lot with our residents who are aging in place at home. And so they wanted to use the fundings for small home modifications, ramps, stair lifts, accessibility, and things of that nature. Here's a couple photos of some of those projects that were completed with those grant funds. We did have a grant renewal just a few weeks ago, so at the, at the program run from November to November, the beginning of November to the beginning of November, and each organization did have a little bit of extra funds left over, so we wanted them to continue with their good works, so we did offer them an extension of those grants. And once those funds are expended, they will be coming up to address the council and share all of their projects that they and share all of their projects that they have done with that funds. Some community resources that we have. We've got our Community Council, which is the lead agency with the tri-county region of St. Charles, Lincoln, and Warren Counties. And they are designed to assist individuals and family experiencing homelessness and to provide services to help these individuals and families transition into permanent housing with the goal of long-term stability. And so this brings together organizations, individuals, nonprofit, government, faith-based, all get together to address these issues, such as homelessness, hunger, affordable housing, and try to find solutions within the community to help address some of these needs. They also have that coordinated entry system, that 211. I'm sure a lot of you have heard of that before. That is a one-phone number, one-entry point for resources and services. So individuals that need assistance, they're in crisis, they can call 211, they can tell their story one time. They don't have to keep repeating that same trauma or that same crisis that they're going through. And this creates an easy and efficient way for people experiencing those crises and housing insecurity to access a case management team that can help try to connect them to services. The city budgets $10,000 annually to support this coordinated entry system. There's also the Continuum of Care. This is a HUD-funded community plan and planning group. Again, that's part of the Community Council. And they meet monthly at various locations throughout the region to share information, network, address specific community needs. Agencies that can then take that shared information and relay that on to clients that are seeking these resources to let them know what is available. The Fragile Families Initiative focuses on hunger, homelessness, and affordable housing. They utilize performance management systems, such as CaseWorthy and CISS, to track services for fragile families. The data is then used for planning and evaluation. So one thing that they do is that annual point-in-time homeless count that is conducted each January throughout the country on a cold winter day to showcase what homelessness looks like in our community. Alexis Jaeger, the previous Public Assistant Specialist, chaired that count in 2025. So we welcomed everyone here into O'Fallon. They came into City Hall. And there's two things that you can do if you volunteer for this. You can do phone calls, or you can do an active physical search. So the phone calls, if you choose to do that, you're provided a list from Coordinated Entry for individuals that have reached out for assistance, just checking back in with them. How are you? Have you received services? Do you need services? Just trying to reconnect with those individuals. With the physical search, you're divided into groups and given a map of specific search groups. There are key points in there, first responder locations, gas stations, motels, just to check in and see if there's been any homeless individuals in the area. Also provided with care kits. We have Girl Scout troops that get together and make little care kits, warm socks, bottles of water. That way, if you do encounter someone that is homeless, you do have a little care kit to give them. There's also the 211 card in there. So if they do need assistance or they're seeking resources, that gives them the opportunity to call and try to connect. So the Grants and Assistance Division utilizes $6,500 out of the CDBG administration for data collection that is included in our consolidated planning. They also submit that data to HUD for an annual report to show Congress the state of homelessness in the country, and that can also assist them with their funding. We have a great O'Fallon Police Department. We have Major Derek Myers and Officer Steve Schneider have really changed the attitude and approach to mitigating issues surrounding homelessness in our community. So their mission is to identify and engage homeless individuals in a compassionate manner, with the intent of directing the individuals to support, resources, and permanent housing. So they have worked collectively, not only with Grants and Assistance, but with the Care Service Street Outreach Team, code enforcement, identifying those that are homeless in our community, trying to connect them to resources. They're providing a familiar face, trying to build that trust with those individuals so that they do feel comfortable coming for assistance. We have our O'Fallon Police Chaplains. They have the Don Lombard Chaplain Assist Fund. It's a 501(c)(3) funded by private donations that allow the chaplains to meet various needs within the community. So their common needs include food, gas for vehicles, hotel stays, and other needs as they arise. If someone is seeking assistance, they must fill out an application for Chaplain Assist. An officer will vet that individual in need, connect them with the chaplain, and then the chaplain will go and administer that need. I do want to give a shout out real quick. It's not on the slide. But Dr. Brandon Kiesling, he is one of our police chaplains and an associate pastor at First Baptist Church, has been wonderful. He's got a wonderful group of individuals that have provided assistance for various projects and requests throughout the city. Some of those are from our Code Enforcement Division that they just need a little extra help. So they've come out. They have power washed, trimmed trees, bushes, mowed grass. So I just wanted to give them a little special thank you and a little special shout out because it's greatly appreciated for what they do in the community. So that's all from me. Do we have any questions?
Questions? Linda?
Thank you. When you were talking about transportation and the nine round trips, 18 one-ways, what is the, is that limited to O'Fallon or?
That is medical locations within St. Charles County. So yeah, so essentially, we can't go from bridge to bridge. So can't go into Chesterfield, can't go into St. Louis.
Okay, anybody else? Debbie?
Thanks, Melissa. You and I talked earlier last week. It was because something came up. But I do have a question on the rental program. Who, maybe I didn't understand it correctly, but the city is not landlords.
No, no. So the care service will purchase those homes, and they will provide the management, if you will, of those homes. So no, we will not be landlords of those.
So we just help with the rent or help with the houses?
We provide the funding for them to purchase those homes.
Portion of the, portion of the whole?
Depending on the house price, yes. Yeah, they do still have those requirements for that. So if they're able to layer additional funding, they can. But yes, for the purchase of those homes.
And like I said, I just appreciate your help earlier. I'm hoping the people got the help. And I think it's great, you were the first, you know, I called you right away.
Yes, I appreciate that you did.
People out there that need help with accessibility to their houses, and you were quick to know exactly where to direct them. So I really appreciate what you did.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that you reached out. Thank you.
Anything else down here before I look this way? Anybody else? Thanks, Melissa. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Next is Drone is the First Responder Overview. I guess the chief's kicking this off.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Before I let Paul loose on you, today we went live with our Real-Time Information Center and our Drone is First Responder Program to the community and to channels two, four, and five. So just a real quick overview on that. We had several police departments in attendance today from St. Charles County, St. Louis County, departments from both those counties. St. Louis City was in attendance. We had three school districts in attendance. The Chamber of Commerce was in attendance. We had one very large company from O'Fallon that was in attendance. I'm not going to name them, just in case I don't want to be named right now. But we delivered the keynote address or two weeks ago at the Chamber of Commerce lunch meeting. We had channel two, four, and five on site today. We're already receiving calls on how to be a part of it, how to do this in their own areas, and to get more information and get tours on what we've been doing out here. So that was really great to hear because those just aired at 5:00 tonight. We're already getting those phone calls. As you're aware, we've done several demos, but also wanted to use the O'Fallon TV platform tonight to remain out in front with our public on what we're doing with the drone technology and the Real-Time Information Center. We thought that was important. So with that, I'm going to let Paul take over and give his presentation.
Thank you, Chief. Well, first of all, I am honored to be here tonight to announce a significant milestone in O'Fallon's ongoing commitment to progress and, in my opinion, prosperity and public safety. As the council's already well aware, the police department previously received approval to begin developing a Real-Time Information Center, or what we refer to as the Arctic. From the outset, one of our highest priorities was the partnership with law enforcement agencies throughout this county. And it is for this reason we continue to work closely with them, and today was a prime example of that. To further support the need of such a partnership, earlier this week, I watched a presentation, and I reviewed data showing that amongst the largest municipalities in the state of Missouri, four of them are located right here in our own county. And those four are ranked in the top 15 statewide, which is pretty good. In fact, in June of this year, St. Charles County even posted an article on their website recognizing that the cities in this county are amongst the fastest-growing counties in the state, according to the latest census report. This clearly demonstrates that O'Fallon and our surrounding municipalities can no longer be viewed as rural, and it underscores the critical need for a unified Arctic like we gave a presentation today. However, tonight, I am proud to announce about an additional program to the Arctic program that will further assist with enhancing the quality of life for all of those who live, work, and visit our fine cities. It is no secret that the O'Fallon Police Department is well-known for being out front when it comes to law enforcement technology. And thanks to your continued support, tonight's announcement is no different. The police department is pleased to announce that we will be launching the Flock Drone is First Responder Program, or better known as DFR, and better yet, a first in the state of Missouri. With the new DFR program, the Arctic can get a drone in the air and to an incident quicker than most of our resources. And usually, and it is our plan, that we'll do that within 90 seconds. Getting such an asset in the air so quickly will give us situational awareness and will further allow us to help improve officer safety. The new DFR program will be able to accomplish this with the deployment of three drone locations throughout our city, along with a state-of-the-art radar system providing us 100% city coverage. With the use of radar development or deployment, this will allow the new Arctic to have a single drone pilot from within our Arctic, where what used to take three watchers and a drone pilot, so a significant savings. Now, while I could definitely stand here tonight and tell you a whole lot of reasons why the Arctic is good for O'Fallon, several, you've already heard from the chief, you've heard him from Mike Nunnery, and then, of course, myself. I wanted to do a short video with some other agencies that have done this so you can see live scenarios where DFR has proven successful.
DFR is definitely a force multiplier for us. So what happens is we get the call from our dispatch that goes to our CAD. Our CAD automatically talks with the Flock program, which gives us the GPS coordinates of where that drone is going to go to that call for service. From there, basically, the pilot just has to launch. Once that launch button's hit, the drone will automatically fly to its coordinates, and then you can have an aerial platform view of what that call for service is.
If I'm in the same room hearing what they're working on, and if I can launch the DFR drone and assist them in any way, it really just goes hand in hand and just makes both of our lives a lot easier.
Getting that 100% aerial perspective of any call for service that you guys have within your department is a crucial piece for officer safety and for community safety.
Having that work hand in hand, LPR and DFR in tandem with Arctic really helps us handle calls more efficiently.
We had a situation where there was a theft that had just occurred in a shopping center. And our real-time operators were able to pick up what we believe to be the vehicle on camera. We were also able to search the partial plate provided by the reporting party at the initial location. We were able to follow that vehicle on our fixed-asset cameras until it arrived to a second location, where then the drone was able to pick up the suspect and the vehicle. And then it provided overwatch until our units were able to get there to conduct an enforcement stop. Having three launch locations has been really amazing because we're able to now be on scene to certain situations within 30 seconds.
The laser precision pinpoint accuracy. The AR overlay has been amazing. So it makes it a lot easier and makes pilots more comfortable when they're flying to actually see the street names from that aerial perspective. Our relationship with the fire department and DFR integration between the two has been amazing.
We're able to update our fire partners with what we're seeing in real time so they can see exactly where the structure fire is, and they have all of that good intelligence while they're en route to the call for service. So it's been great for building those relationships. The technology will continue to develop, and it will just accelerate the ability to solve crime in real time.
On one particular call, the license plate reader had noticed a vehicle go by. That vehicle had warrants associated with it. And some of those warrants were felony warrants. When that occurred, my drone pilot immediately launched the drone. The drone followed the vehicle for a period of time as patrol assets were brought in. When the patrol assets arrived, they initiated an enforcement stop on that particular vehicle. And the subject that was in the vehicle was identified, and those warrants were accurate. And he was placed in custody during that traffic enforcement stop. On that particular call, the drone was in the air and responded to the scene in under two minutes.
231 and 241 for 48 at Volta. 12395 Imperial. Two females running in blue sweatshirts.
231, that's going to be coming back to afford Fusion.
Raptor, I have it. Imperial plus Central, westbound south for the red. It's in the number two lane, no front plate. They're passing the 57 northbound off-ramp. Still in the westbound number two lane.
41, I have it on the on-ramp. 57 southbound.
241 has the vehicle yielded?
Building right now.
Unit's on scene, just simply the driver seems to be reaching around the center console area with his right hand. Raptor, hands are outside now.
109, 123, we're coming on the second.
10411.
109, caution, we're going to be clearing the car.
I'm seeing the subject walking to the north from the residence at about 05:45 this morning.
Jumping in the woods to the east of 117, did you?
Affirm. There's some opening in the canopy. I didn't know how long you could go. We went down in there on foot as well and didn't see anything.
In the ivy, kind of just to the southeast of the house.
Here he is. 98, I'll be with him. Hi, sir. My name's Ty.
Good call for drone, yeah. Yeah, we would have never found him.
Technology is always and ever-changing, and we have to do that as well in law enforcement. And if we can continue to progress with it, it's going to be safer in our community. It's going to be safer for the police officers. And I really feel like the technology will keep us from falling behind the times.
We want to get the reputation that Casper's not the place bad guys want to come. Eyes in the sky, we'll be there in 90 seconds. We will find you.
I want to hit back on that one again, where they were in the wooded area. Excuse me, I brought this one up today during the presentation. Officers walked by that open trail. They even walked up onto that open trail a little bit, came back down, and kept walking. It wasn't until the drone flew over, found that elderly walkaway sitting down in the ivy. I mean, the officer even said on there that they wouldn't have found it if it wouldn't have been for the drone. So that shows the importance and vital reason why drones are needed in today's industry. So in conclusion, the new DFR program, combined with our other technologies that are already in place, of course, working with our area agencies throughout this entire county to provide a true prevention through our Arctic, the support of our businesses that we've already been working with, and hopefully a lot more, and definitely, as well of our citizens who have supported all of our programs up to this point. And then, of course, with your continued support, then no doubt will the Arctic truly stand as a shining example of what can happen when agencies and cities can come together for a common good. So that's really what I have. I just wanted to give you an overview of what we will be launching. Thank you with your support.
Arctic will be up and running when?
Arctic will be up and running when?
The Arctic, our goal--
Not to put you on the spot--
Yeah. The contract really does not start with the DFR program till July 1 of next year, when the Arctic's actually already up and running. However, we actually had some conversations with them tonight, a lot of good reasons why we may very well potentially be able to start a lot sooner.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Snowden.
I noticed he didn't actually answer you. Wouldn't you expect it to actually be up and running?
Right now, DFR portion of it, July, or, I'm sorry.
The Arctic.
The Arctic is operational right now in the soft-launch setup. We're running a council and dispatch. We already have had some wins with it. The construction, we're expected to start of the actual facility in the second week of December, with our vendor being onsite for training at the end of February, so ribbon-cutting on March 10th.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Snowden.
I wasn't going to put him on the spot, but--
Oh, yeah, he would.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Thank you, no question, just to, congratulations and thank you, this is really impressive, so great work.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Roth.
Yes, thanks, ma'am. I went to that presentation you guys had at the police station, and we were figuring out the distance from north to south O'Fallon and seeing how many drones it would take to cover. You were saying with the three, it would cover 100%?
Yes, sir.
I thought during that presentation, we were running ourselves a little short on the north end with three drones. Is there any way we can get maybe a fourth, so we won't cut ourselves short on the distance? And then with the batteries and everything, ours, three--
Right now--
Pretty much positive will cover everything?
Right now, I am confident with three to cover our city. What we are deploying, we're actually doing two drone garages at each of our locations. That combined with our patrol drone division, if we have one of our main drones up, the north drone, and the battery has started getting low, and we need to bring it back, that is where we can set it up with the patrol division to deploy one of their mobile drones until that comes back and lands, and the other drone can immediately take off. I'm feeling confident with it, sir.
Where are the three locations they're going to be at?
We can't tell you that yet.
I'm still in negotiations with those locations. It's looking good, but I'm hoping within the month, I'll be able to go through Mr. Snowden and advise that information, sir.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Paul, I think with presentation, actually, we basically can cover Cotville and Lake St. Louis, and I'll be Darden Prairie.
Cotville is probably 80% covered. We cover 100% of Lake St. Louis.
And Darden Prairie.
And Darden Prairie, yes, sir.
And we do, and it's 100%. They showed the outline, and it's basically covering the whole city, great city of O'Fallon. There you go.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Thank you, gentlemen. Any other items for consideration? Send none, like to have motion go to closed session, 610-0211. Legal actions, cause of actions, litigation involving a public governmental body, and any confidential and privileged communication between a public governmental body where it's representative and its illustrious attorneys. 610-0212, leasing, purchase, sale of real estate. 610-02112, sealed bids, relayed documents until the bids are opened, and sealed proposals and relayed documents, or any documents relayed to negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected.
Ragsdale.
Motion for Councilman Ragsdale, second.
Cascola.
Motion for Cascola, roll call. Katie?
Councilmember Ragsdale. Councilmember Cascola?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Kewen?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Yes.
Councilmember Wexler?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
All right, nine yes, will be in the community room at 6:50.
On call to order, the November 20th, 2025, O'Fallon City Council meeting to order, roll call, Bess.
Mayor Hennessy?
Present.
Councilmember Wexler?
Present.
Councilmember Roth?
Present.
Councilmember Boyer?
He's excused.
Councilmember Thompson?
Present.
Councilmember Cascola?
Present.
Councilmember Kewen?
Present.
Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Councilmember Cook?
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Present.
Thank you. If everybody would please stand in fable for the invocation by Police Chaplain Michael Hatherden, Senior Pastor of First Baptist Church of O'Fallon, filed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Wexler.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this week that you've given to us, we thank you for the season where we have the opportunity to hopefully just take a time, pause out of a hectic, busy life that so many of us have. Father, I just, I pray that we have time to just simply pause and reflect on gratitude, our Thanksgiving, the opportunity for us to just thank you for the bountiful blessings that you have in our life. Father, we thank you for this great city that we live in, we thank you for our mayor and our city officials. Father, we thank you for the city council who works so hard to ensure that we have a place like O'Fallon to raise our families, to be able to live, to be able to spend time with friends and family. And Father, I just pray that you would show your continued blessing upon this city, keep our children safe, Father, keep our schools safe. Father, we pray for our police officers, our first responders, those who serve this city so well. Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to live in a place like this. Pray for our meeting tonight, that you would guide us, lead us, direct us, Father, that we would honor you and all. For it's in your name, pray these things. Amen.
Amen.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, folks, you have a gin in front of you, what's the pleasure?
Motion--
Mr. Kewen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to table item number 19, Bill number 7810, and place it on the workshop in December.
Second, Cascola.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Kewen, second, by-- Cascola. To table Bill 7810. Questions or comments? Mr. Kewen?
Since I made the motion, I'd like to say a little about it. I was a little surprised to hear about this ordinance, particularly given that the sponsor was my counterpart in Ward Four. Typically, when someone on council or staff has an ordinance proposal, it is placed on a workshop. While this step isn't mandated, it allows all parties to ask questions, do research, interview affected parties, and discuss with staff or other city organizations the pros and cons, or even the ramifications of passing an ordinance. As an ordinance is passed as local law, I think it's particularly prudent to be careful in our decisions on these. Two, I was disappointed that even after I learned about this ordinance on Monday evening of this week, when the agenda came out, my counterpart has still not reached out to discuss this item, even now, even to this very moment. Instead, I have to read her comments in the post dispatch and see it on KSDK, neither of which bothered to reach out to most of the council or the mayor prior to issuance of their respective stories. Because this is an important decision, the motion I've made is to table this item and have it placed on the December workshop. I invite parties like residents, realtors, home builders, unions, school districts, anyone affected by this, to weigh in on this, either at that workshop or in writing prior. Feel free to email each and every one of us, feel free to send a letter, feel free to make a phone call. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
I don't know why Councilmember Kewen is so surprised that I brought this ordinance up, as it's, number one, was something I campaigned on the whole time, and number two, I've been talking about it months and months during my ward report, and you had plenty of chances to talk about it to me then, or afterwards, and you did not. So it seems to me that you want to table this, put it on the workshop, are you scared to vote on it? I don't understand. This is something that I know the residents in our ward have been asking us for. This is something I know that you have been making very clear about being done with apartments in O'Fallon, but now you want to talk about it? Just, I'm flabbergasted at this. And I don't understand why you would even vote against it, because this is only a vote to refer it to P&amp;Z that would come back to us, right, and give their recommendations. So you want to table it and talk about it in a workshop so that this is not referred to P&amp;Z? This isn't even the final vote? That's all I have to say about that.
Mr. Cascola?
Thank you, Mayor. While I think there is some merit to having this moratorium, I think that a deeper conversation needs to be had with senior housing being considered apartments, and this is multifamily in general, it's not a ban on apartments or a moratorium on apartments, it's on multifamily in general. There are a lot of developments that, and the market is demanding, attached homes. So to put a moratorium on things that are going to bring people that want to move into one of the best cities in the world, I don't think that's a great idea. It needs to be discussed, we need to look at some of the unintended consequences of passing something like this, and let our recommending body, the P&amp;Z, review this before we just throw this out there, basically telling our P&amp;Z what they have to do, rather than them recommending to us what we need to do.
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I really echo what Councilmember Cascola said. My first concern in reading through this ordinance was just, I thought about our senior living population, and if I'm reading the ordinance as it's proposed correctly, it would be a ban on not only senior living facilities, but also on, you know, potentially affordable housing in the area, which I think we can all agree on is desperately needed. And so I do think that it makes more sense to take a step back, ask, put this forward in the workshop so that we can ask staff to run reports, take a look at answering any questions that we have, so that we can present P&amp;Z with a more complete picture of what it is that we're trying to accomplish. Thanks.
Mr. Roth?
Yes, Mayor and Council. To me, this, it ain't a bad ideal to do what we want to do, or vote on whatever, but earlier today, we had a discussion about the agenda coming out on a Monday and not being prepared to do things on the Thursday. So I'm with tabling it to where we can sit back, get off all of our ducks in a row, and see what kind of effect it's going to have. So I'm thinking if we just had a half-hour discussion on the agenda coming out on Monday and not having enough time to go through things, I think we ought to add that to that list of, just, let's take a little bit of time and look at this and move forward. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Ragsdale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was torn about this, because I have heard from a lot of residents, a lot of people seem to be really excited that we're talking about a moratorium on apartments, but as Councilmember Kewen and Councilmember Cascola pointed out, is, this is also with multifamily units, and my fear is just that if we vote on this, and granted, the vote would be in two weeks, but if we push this through right now, there might be unintended consequences, and that's my only big thing, is I want to make sure that we talk about unintended consequences before we vote on something that we find out later in hindsight was not a good idea. So that's where I am, thank you.
Mr. Kewen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't say I was against it, I didn't say I was for it. Check out my voting record. I've been up here for eight and a half years, I have voted against a whole bunch of apartments, even when I was the only one voting against it. To throw accusations at me because I don't like the way that this was presented is silly and childish. Indeed, there are ramifications I see in this that probably need to be cleaned up, particularly senior housing. I think everybody up here agrees we need more senior housing, but if we pass this moratorium, we're not going to get any for a year, because it's swooped up into it, there's got to be a better way to avoid it. As to sending in and planning zoning, that's exactly my point. We have a workshop on it, we discuss whether we want to send it to planning and zoning, we don't send it with our answer already determined by voting on an ordinance, we send it after a workshop, and then we take their recommendations, see what they have to add to it. What I'm asking isn't to ignore the moratorium or to start building a bunch of apartments, quite the opposite. What I'm asking is, one, let's slow down and take our time and ask all the right people the right questions. Councilmember Taylor sat at the workshop today and made a lot of comments about not having enough time to review it, not having enough time to get staff questions answered, and she was truly pulling for, we need three more days to review the agenda. And then, I see this on the agenda Monday afternoon, it's exactly all those things. Two, I made the comment at the workshop that if you don't have enough time and you don't have enough information, ask to table it, and the council will likely agree to it. She actually said, I'm going to hold you to that, something to that effect. Yeah, she wants to be able to table something if she doesn't have time, because I think that's appropriate. Now I ask to table something, and I'm the bad guy. I'm not going to get into a pissing contest with my counterpart up here, our child is back and forth, but I don't like being accused of something. I tried to keep my comments respectful and clean and direct. So let's get it to the workshop where it belongs, let's have a good discussion about it, let's figure out what the best thing to do for the city is. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
Councilmember Kewen wanted more time. How long have we been dealing with this, community, of the ramifications of the overdevelopment in this area? The traffic, the unsafe conditions. He had plenty of time to address it then, or think about it then, and now he wants more time? I'm not passing this as a punishment. I'm not, I didn't put this up as a punishment, this is not, this is a time to sit back and take a breath and see what we have done in this county and in this city. Yeah, we talk about senior housing, and I'm for it, we need senior housing, but it's not what I want, it's what's safe for the city, and what's best for the city, and what the residents want, not us sitting up here. They're not there saying we want more time on this, when they're sitting in traffic for hours. I'm sure they want more time. And yeah, multifamily, these are, I would target these areas because, you know, apartments, multifamily, because this is where the dense population comes in, and this is where the strain on our city comes in, and the strain on our streets come in. So yeah, they want to put it to workshop so what, we can talk about things that we already know? And they want to talk about it not going to P&amp;Z? So they can give us-- That's exactly why we're sending it to P&amp;Z, we want the recommendations and then to give us those details. But the people want this, and I'm just, I'm representative of the people. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah. And Ms. Taylor, I agree with you, this wouldn't even be voted on tonight, anyway. Okay? So to me, what this is going to do is go to the workshop for this council, to have staff do the reports and whatever this council wants to do, send it to the P&amp;Z commission, if that's what this council decides to do, and have them make-- Because you wouldn't be voting on this ordinance tonight, anyway. There is no public hearing on this tonight.
So why table it?
Because you need to-- Because I think this council needs to have staff say, this is what the council wants to do.
This is what the people want.
Okay. Ms. Roth? Ms. Ragsdale?
Thank you. Is it possible, since we don't have another meeting until our one meeting in December-- Is it possible, since we don't have another meeting until our one meeting in December, is it possible to not table it, but then at the next workshop, talk about it during workshop and then vote that same night?
No, because what this, this ordinance is basically saying is if you vote on it in the December meeting and you vote to pass it, it's not, this, this ordinance is not saying send it to P and Z. This ordinance is saying to do a moratorium.
No, and I understand that, but what I'm saying is if people want to discuss...
You, you can do the first reading tonight and then table it at the December meeting. You know, it's one half dozen the other. I mean, you can, because if you do the first reading tonight and come December after the workshop and this council says, and votes on it and votes yes, the moratorium's set. It doesn't go to P and Z. And I don't, Kevin, I don't think we can, this is a, we just can't put it, it's got to go through P and Z first, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Keen.
You know, when the new group got up here, I made a comment at my ward report that we're not always going to agree, but I believe everybody up here is, is trying to better the city in their own way. We're all representatives of the people. That is literally, literally our job. But rushing ahead, talking about sitting in hours of traffic? How many of you have sat in hours of traffic in O'Fallon? I've never sat in hours of traffic in the city. And I've gone from all the way down to 61, all the way up to 79. And I've, it's never taken me hours. Not during rush hour, not in the morning, not in the evening. Yes, there's traffic. There's traffic concerns. We're dealing with those. Let's talk about what they really are. Let's get staff to give us some numbers. She mentioned in her KSDR, KSDK interview that she was worried about overcrowding of schools. Let's talk to the school districts. Let's find out what the, what's actually going on. Let's get the actual data, instead of putting it on a Monday evening agenda and voting on it on a Thursday. You know, of, of course, we're all here for the people. What other possible reason we'll be up here? We're not paid very much. We spend a great deal of time doing this. We do this for the love of our city. I do this for the love of our city. And just because Council, Councilmember Taylor and I disagree on how to do that or what the procedure should be going up to that, doesn't mean that she's for the people and that means everybody else isn't. And I resent the, I resent the implication, to be honest. So let's have a workshop. Let's have the people who are involved come up and give us the facts. Let's see if the wording of the ordinance is going to have unintended consequences like stopping senior housing. And let's see if we can work around that. Then let's send it to P and Z and let them give us their recommendation. And then let's vote on it. Because that's how it should be done. You know, if this was so urgent, Councilmember Taylor's been up here since April. Why wait until November and put it on agenda and not talk to anyone? Not city staff? Not the council? Not even her own co-council, councilman? Not the mayor? No one. She put it on there. No, I don't think she's doing it to, whatever she said her reason was, that to be insulting or inflammatory or anything else. I don't think she thought about it. I think she decided that this was what she wanted to do, so she threw it out there. And that's fine. I'm just saying, let's tamp the brakes. Let's get all the information. Let's make a wise decision. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I do appreciate you bringing this forward, Councilmember Taylor. I, I think it's something that absolutely warrants a conversation, probably multiple conversations. I disagree probably with your sense of urgency in that we haven't really approved or built a lot of apartment complexes in recent years. So I don't think that this is something that we need to rush into without giving it due process, due diligence, and making sure that we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. And, and I echo what Councilmember Ragsdale said. I, I don't want there to be unintended consequences. And I do keep coming back to the senior housing situation. I mean, we, we have an opportunity to step back, do some real research on this ordinance. What will work? What won't work? How can we carve out so that we could still potentially build senior, senior living or affordable housing? And then put something to the P and Z board that would be more likely to pass through P and Z, because it's, it's, it's a more solid, well-thought-out plan. So I, I understand the urgency, but I, I think that taking a step back and delaying this a month so that we can get all of the facts and tell a complete story, I, I think it's well worth our time.
Ms. Taylor.
I think Councilmember Keen has forgotten why I'm sitting in this seat right here. It's because the people are tired of not being listened to. You want to laugh, but it's true.
I can laugh.
Well, I'm not done talking.
Mr. Keen.
Now, thanks, Councilmember Thompson, for, you know, acknowledging that it was, this is the right, comes from the right place and wanting to do what's right for the people. We have apartments being built now in O'Fallon. We, at the last P and Z, we had an extension for more apartments that are coming. So yeah, there are still apartments being built and it's still a problem. There's, there, this, you keep going back to, you know, the seniors. I just don't feel that, you know, it's a punishment to them when we are doing, when I'm doing this, apparently me, to, you know, make them, make sure the area is safe for You mentioned not having time or me reaching out and talking to you about this. Not even Councilmember Thomas, a lot of the other council members. Well, nobody reached out to me either. None of the other council members reached out and wanted to talk about this to me, asked me questions about it, which they blame that I didn't reach out to them. But no, I didn't get a single call about it either, asking what my thoughts are on it. And I would have loved to. I would have loved to discuss it with them. But silence that way also. I just think this is cowardly. And I think the people agree.
Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Taylor, I agree. I think this is something that needs to come up. I know other communities have been talking about it, trying to pass similar things. Let's just go about it the right protocol. Let's have a workshop. Let's all talk about it. Some people might have some more ideas that we could add to your, to your, your bill. And, you know, I had a meeting today with somebody who wants to bring in some multifamily that is kind of a little bit more affordable and that this would exclude that out of there. And I don't want to see that be done. So let's, let's give it one more month. Let's go the right process. Let's do the workshop. And, and that way we can get all of our heads around it and, and get behind it and support
Mr. Keen.
So it seems I'm not the only one that thinks we need to tamp the brakes and take our time. Does that make us all cowardly?
Mr. Keen.
Does that mean we're not listening?
Mr. Keen, enough's enough. Please.
Well, let's have the vote. Move on.
Anybody else? I have a motion to table 7810 and move it to the December workshop. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Eight to one. It is tabled. I have a mo, do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda? Keen. Motion by Councilman Keen, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Cuskala. Do what? When we get there. Motion by Councilman Keen, second by Cuskala of the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Only thing on the Presiding Officer's Report I have is, if you notice, we're all wearing our celebration of lights. Well, most of us are wearing our celebration of lights. Celebration of Lights at Ford Zumaup Park kicks off on Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, so a week from tomorrow. So, and the walkthrough will be December 7th, 8th, and 9th, which is Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. And I will let the councilmen say what they need to say on, for the food drive that this council's putting on for the 7th, 8th, and 9th. So with that, I do have a lot of comment cards for public comments. So when we get to the public portion, public comment portion for that bill, that's when you'll come up. But I do have some citizens' comments. Mr. Deenoff. And just as a reminder, you have a three-minute time limit.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Ronnie C. A.C. Deenoff, running for Ward One City Council and also the city public advocate. Just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to all of you and everybody in our city. First thing I'd like to address are resolutions. For some reason, the last year, somebody came up with the wisdom to speed these meetings through, even though each and every one of you get $15,000 and a lot of perks and benefits as elected officials. The mayor gets, I believe, $34,000. But you decide to bury within the consent agenda, you decide to hide resolutions A through H. A through H has, have consequences. It's over $2 million in spending. There needs to be some discussion and debate among you as elected officials. You know, we're, we're, we're talking about a lot of money here. And I believe the taxpayers deserve to know, rather than just glaze over it and rubber stamp it, say it's okay to spend over $2 million of our taxpayer money. Resolution G on your agenda is super alarming, and I'm sure there's other speakers who will speak more in detail, but there's a huge difference on our roofing contract when we only receive two bidders and one bid is $3 million, the other bid is $6 million. There's something definitely wrong there. It puts up a huge red flag. And I'm going to enjoy listening to other speakers after me. It's about transparency. It's about discussion, dialogue, debate, give and take. On Bill 7810, this is the first time in years that I've seen this council actually have a robust, robust discussion and talking issues. Everything else is glossed over. It's like a big rubber stamp, a big puppet on the string type council that we have that spends tens of millions of dollars in some city council meetings and doesn't give a rat of how the people of our town feel. One is being the bond issue that's on tonight's agenda. And so when it comes to an ordinance, ordinance with the fella, the gentleman, Mr. Patel, who lives in Cape Girardeau, Missouri, and is the owner of O'Fallon Playfield Commons LLC, who in the world negotiated this contract and agreement with him to give him hundreds of millions of dollars in giveaways? I, I'm shocked and dismayed. Doubling the city's sales tax rate, creating a new political subdivision, a CID to tax people again, a community improvement district, create a transportation development district, another 1% sales tax.
You have 15 seconds.
Tax abatement for personal and real estate taxes in the amount of $48 million, industrial revenue bond, sales tax exemption, hotel guest tax of 5%, city annual minimum contribution of $200,000 annually.
Mr. Deenoff. Mr. Deenoff. Mr. Deenoff.
He says he should stop.
Mr. Deenoff, your time is up, sir.
That's right. And I'll see you at the public theater.
Right on. And just to let everybody know, the resolutions that he was talking about, they're all budgeted items. This is, they're all budgeted. So it's all been through the budget process and everything else. So that's what those resolutions are on the consent calendar. Next speaker.
Good evening. Bob Barrett, I live in Winghaven. And I'm here to speak on the resolution, the ordinance are the, what am I looking at? 20, 25G. It's about the, what he talked about, the difference in bids. When I first saw it, I was kind of alarmed. I'm like, it kind of reminds me of a story about my neighbor coming over and saying, I got two bids on these windows I want to replace, because all of our houses, older houses need their windows replaced. And one was one bid for, and the other one was half the price. I said, look, there's something wrong with this bid. There is something wrong with this bid. And of course, he went with the cheaper one. And my wife asked me, well, why do you do that? Well, I can't really say anything, because it's his money. But this is my money. There's a, there's something wrong with a bid that's different that much. I don't know if you need to put a bid back, alphabet or whatever. But something that different is, throws up a red flag. And sure enough, two years later, he had to replace his windows because the other ones were no good. The work was shabby and it was no good. So I want to thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. And y'all have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker, Jeff Johnston.
Thank you. I'm here to talk about Resolution G.
Give us your name and address, please.
I'm sorry?
Name and address, please.
Jeff Johnston, 2810 Royal Viewway.
Okay.
I'm a 40-year resident of O'Fallon. I'm a sheet metal worker. And I have the same issue on this particular bid is because I am now a project manager and we don't take bids, or we don't get awarded bids if there's less than three contracts. And I think there is $2.4 million discrepancy in between the two. And I think it needs to be talked about and looked in a little bit further, because it's, something doesn't seem right. If the price is too good, there's probably a reason why it's that low. So I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And next speaker is Paul Lawler.
Yes, sir.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Paul Lawler, 2 Glen Mill Court, O'Fallon, Missouri. I'm a business owner here in, in the area. And I want to talk about that Resolution G as well. I think that, like my other brothers have said, it's, it's just too far apart. There should be another, we should open it back up for another bid and have another number come in and see where we're at with it. You know, I'm not saying who's right or who's wrong. I just think there needs to be a third number.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right. I have two speaker cards from Rose Zup. Rose, are you going to be speaking on the Caledonia? Or are you talking about something else?
Caledonia.
I just want to wait then, when we do the public hearing for Caledonia?
Yep.
I mean, alls I have is, I didn't know what you wanted to talk about. Alls it, it didn't say anything that you wanted to talk about. So that's why I called you. I will call you on, when it comes up with the Caledonia project.
All right. Thanks.
I do not see Liz. So all the citizens' comments that I have, if I'm, if I'm mistaken, I think all the rest of them are on the Caledonia project. Does anybody else? I tried to go through these as quick as I could. Did anybody else have something else besides the Caledonia project for the Dobson scooters? I have that, Mr. Deenoff. All right. Brings us to ward reports. Ward one.
Thank you, Mayor. I got a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Bill Mitchellson and Steve from the parks. They were able to get me a, a lift truck over at the museum so we can replace a rope on the flagpole. So I want to say thanks to them. And finally, after a few years, I went down with some other veterans and we got City O'Fallon to be a Purple Heart city and a POW MIA city. And these past couple of weeks, I'm starting to see the signs finally go up, which look great. I want to say thanks to... I want to say thanks to the streets or whoever's been doing all that. And just, I hope everybody has a good and safe Thanksgiving. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Wexler.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to give thanks to everybody that put a bunch of work into the tree lighting ceremony last night. If you were there, you saw it was absolutely awesome. If not, you can check it out on Facebook. I think they livestreamed it. And I just want to say thanks to everybody coming out, speaking their mind. I think that's, that's pretty cool to see in a city. Sometimes we get one or two people here, so it's cool to see a full room. And lastly, Happy Thanksgiving. Thanks.
Ms. Thompson, Ward 2.
Thank you, Mayor. I too just want to thank everybody for showing up this evening and sharing your thoughts with us, one way or another, whether it's speaking up in front of us or sending us emails, leaving us voicemails. We, I'll just speak for myself. I mean, I do take all of those to heart. And I really try to consider everybody's perspective. And sometimes it's not an easy job, sitting up here, trying to do what's best for the city, especially when it's in opposition to perhaps half of, half of the city's residents. And so I just, I just wanted to maybe remind all of my fellow council members that, you know, it's easy to get heated and frustrated with each other and to sort of call names and make accusations and things like that. But I think that it's really important that we try to remain...
Civil?
Civil. Thank you. That's a good word. I think it's important that we do that, especially sitting up here as elected officials. And so I just want to remind everybody that that's something that I'll be trying to do. And I encourage everybody to do the same. And with that, Happy Thanksgiving to you and your families.
Thank you. Ms. Kuskella, Ward 3.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. Hopefully, everybody gets a time to reflect on gratitude and give thanks for the blessings that they have in their life and thank their family and friends and everybody around them. Also, I want to remind everybody about the Celebration of Lights. The City Council here will be collecting canned goods at the entrance for the holiday stroll at the park as well at Fort Zumwalt West High School, where the bus pickup and drop-off is, supporting some of the local food pantries in the area. We would really love your support. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. So as what Ms. Kuskella said, the three food pantries are here in O'Fallon. It would be St. Vincent de Paul, Salvation Army, and the Hope Pantry. So those are the three pantries that those canned goods will go to. Ward 4. Ms. Taylor.
There's a lot I could talk about tonight. Boy, is there a lot I can talk about. But when it comes down to it, there's one issue that rises far above the rest, and it demands our full attention. St. Charles County has lost its only emergency crisis shelter that's located in our city of O'Fallon. Earlier this month, I attended the community council's meeting held on this subject.
Ms. Taylor, can you hold on just a second? Before you get going, what I've just been told is we have no sound going out on the internet. Okay? So we have two options here, folks. We either continue and get, you know, have the sound up. I'll let you explain it, Mr. Snowden.
So sound is being recorded, but it's not being broadcast. We believe it's a server issue, and rebooting the server would fix that. We can do one of two things. Either add the sound to the meeting for future viewings tomorrow and in the future, or we can stop the meeting now for 20 minutes to reboot the server with no guarantees that that actually fixes it.
Carry on. Carry on. Go ahead, Ms. Taylor.
As I. Yeah. So earlier this month, I attended the community council's meeting held on the subject of our only emergency shelter in the county closing. And what I heard wasn't just an update, but it was a cry for help. The situation has come down to two urgent realities. One, if we cannot raise enough funding for the emergency weather response team, there is a very real possibility that the people in our community will freeze to death this winter. And two, we have to identify a location for a permanent crisis shelter in the county. This is not an abstract policy debate. This is a matter of human life, dignity, and basic compassion. Families, seniors, and individuals in crisis currently have nowhere safe that they can turn to. And I heard heartbreaking stories of, you know, they're down to the only options of people in this situation giving them tents to sleep in, and even mothers and children seeking refuge and sleeping in storage units because there's no options left. And this is happening right here in our community. We cannot accept this, and we cannot look away. We need real solutions, real partnerships, and real countywide commitment to ensuring that no one is left in the cold. With Thanksgiving approaching next week, many of us are grateful for the simple things: a roof over our head, a warm bed to sleep in, and food on the table for our family. But gratitude means little if it does not move us into action for those who have none of these things. Our community's compassion is being tested. So let's rise to meet this moment together. Thank you.
What's Q and?
Thank you. And I'm just going to echo what Councilmember Taylor just said. You know, we usually think of the homeless around Thanksgiving. We should be thinking about them all the time. The fact that the homeless shelter has closed here in St. Charles County, for good unfortunately, leaves us in a bit of a crisis. I assume most of you know that there are homeless here in the city of O'Fallon. They live under bridges. They live in the wooded areas between homes and commercials, commercial areas, and they need help. And quite frankly, there are a lot of people in this city who are literally one paycheck away from being homeless themselves. As a city, we try to do what we can. But as individuals, look, I've lived in this city since 1994, and I know what a giving, generous community this can be. I would strongly recommend that you reach out to your local charities. I would start with St. Vincent's De Paul, Salvation Army, and see what you can do to help, whether it's donate money, donate time, both, whatever it is that you can give, you know, give generously. The last thing I want to think about is some poor mother and her child sleeping under a bridge somewhere when it's 2 degrees outside. So please, find it in your hearts, give generously. Help those who are down on their luck. On a little bit of a brighter note, I wanted to just elaborate on what Councilmember Kuskella and the mayor said. Sunday night, the 7th, at the stroll, we're going to be collecting for St. Vincent's De Paul's food shelter. Monday night, we'll be collecting for the Salvation Army. And Tuesday night, for the Hope Food Pantry. And last year, we kind of did this last minute, so we didn't get a chance to really announce it much or get a lot of publicity. I'm hoping this year, we can easily double or triple what we collected last year. So, you know, bring a can, bring two cans, bring a case of cans. We'll take care of it from there. Other than that, I want to wish everybody a Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward 5.
Thank you, Mayor. And to add on to that, and it doesn't just have to be canned goods, any non-perishable foods would be great so we can stock up the pantries here locally. I personally will be at Fort Zumwalt West with a blue pickup truck on Monday night. So stop by, say hi, bring your non-perishables. It would be greatly appreciated. And to everybody, enjoy Thanksgiving, enjoy your family. Thank you.
Ms. Ragsdale.
Thank you. I'm sorry Lenore is not here tonight, but I wanted to thank her and the Utilities Department. We had a situation, code-red notification system being down. And I reached out to Lenore, and she immediately jumped into action, and we got a resident taken care of. So kudos to her and that team for getting all that together. And with Thanksgiving coming up next week, I just personally, I have a lot personally to be thankful for, especially literally today. And thank you to the members of City Council who have been so sweet with everything that I've had going on. So thank you. I'm very thankful for all of you.
Thank you. City Administrator's report. Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the contributions of some staff members who are reaching milestone anniversaries this month. Emergency Communication Officer Nick Harper and Media Producer Joe Richter have been with O'Fallon for five years. Joe's actually been with us for 13 years, but five years full-time. Greg Egan, who's an inspector in our Engineering Department, has served our citizens for the last 20 years. And last but certainly not least, Small Engine Technician Bobby Myers has served our city for the last 25 years. I'd like to thank all four of these individuals for being such an integral part of Team O'Fallon for all these years. I am proud to share that the city of O'Fallon has been ranked 49th out of 250 on the U.S. News and World Report's 2025 Best Places to Retire list. O'Fallon is the highest-ranked city in Missouri on the list. To create that list, the company analyzed data from more than 850 cities across the country, looking at quality of life, overall value, tax rates, senior population trends, and healthcare quality. And O'Fallon stood out as one of the best. This recognition adds to our growing list of honors. In 2025, O'Fallon was also named the number-one best place to live in Missouri and the number-20 best small city to live in the U.S. We're proud to be a community the people love to call home at every stage of life. And I'd like to wish a belated birthday to Councilmember Taylor. And that's all I have for tonight, sir.
Thank you. Brings us to old business, brings to Bill 7791. This is on the table. Do I have a motion to remove it from the table?
Motion, Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Wexler. Do I have a second?
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Since this is removed from the table, the applicant has requested that this item be withdrawn. So do I have a motion to withdraw Bill 7791?
Q and? Roth. Hold for a second.
Motion by Councilman Q and, second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This Bill 7791 has been withdrawn. Brings to Bill 7794. Motion for second reading? Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second?
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7794, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance exempting the city of O'Fallon from the provisions of Section 311.2026 RSMO relating to liquor licenses.
Thank you. Motion, final passage.
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second?
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. Questions or comments? Cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. 7794 pass becomes ordinance number?
7254.
7254. Thank you, Vass. Next is a public hearing to consider approval of an ordinance authorizing directing the issuance and sale and delivery of special obligation bond Series 2025A and special obligation bonds 2025B in the city of O'Fallon, Missouri, and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith. Ms. Boshard.
Good evening. On the agenda this evening is the second reading of an ordinance to issue special obligation bonds. The public hearing is specific to the Series B portion of the special obligation bonds and is being held in accordance with the requirements of the Internal Revenue Code, specifically Section 147F, for the issuance of qualified 501(c)(3) bonds. The Series B portion of the bonds are being issued in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $25 million to finance, reimburse, and refinance the cost of acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping a police training facility. The project will initially be owned by the city of O'Fallon and jointly operated by the city and the city of St. Charles, Missouri, through the Training Center Board pursuant to an intergovernmental partnership agreement. Due to the nature of the facility, there is an expectation that a portion of the project may be leased to one or more nonprofit organizations. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. We also have Mark Grimm from Gilmore &amp; Bell, who is our Bond Counsel, who is here in attendance, if you have any questions for him.
Questions for Vicki? Seeing none. If you'd step aside. Mr. Dinoff.
Thank you very much, members of the City Council. Rony C. A.C. Dinoff, City Public Advocate. You know, when it comes to these bonds, Series A and Series B, I kind of shake my head. Where was the financial thinking? We come up with all these projects all the time, but we don't think about how we're going to spend or how we're going to pay for them. We need to start to learn to pay as we go and use common sense, arithmetic, multiplication, and mathematics. If you take the city of Wentzville, they have had no bonds and have had no tax increases. They paid for water plant and sewer plant improvements without a bond and without an increase. They built a brand-new city hall about four or five years ago for $15 million. They built a community center last year for $41 million without any bonds or tax increases. They just built a couple of months ago and opened up. I went to the ribbon-cutting, the Public Works Center, for $41 million. And they're now, in 2026, going to build a 40-plus-million-dollar police and public safety building. So that's $137 million that they saved without interest, without attorney's fees, without making somebody rich in the bond market. They paid with all cash and no interest. We're anticipating, and I read all the documents, we're anticipating in the bid opening of 5% to 5.5% interest over the, your document says 14 years. Well, I calculated the payments, and it says from 2026 to 2045. According to my calculation, that's 19 years. So why are we not joining with our law enforcement center, spending the $50 million that's already paid for by the state of Missouri to build a law enforcement center in the center of four counties: St. Charles County, Jefferson County, Franklin County, and St. Louis County? It's duplication of services, building two law enforcement centers doing the same purpose, the same function. Where's the money coming from to pay these monies and interest rates that are at a high rate right now? In my opinion, it's wasted money, and you didn't plan on these projects. Series 2025A is $29,290,000 with interest. It's going to be over more than $32 million to pay it back in 18 years.
You have 15 seconds.
Series 2025B is $22,830,000, $25 million to pay it back. And that's $57 million of taxpayer money altogether, a huge liability without a vote of the people.
Mr. Dinoff.
I don't think our community will stand for it.
Your time's up, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I have no other speakers on this item, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. O'Keefe?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I would not wish to presume on the Finance Director's expertise, but I do think it's important to point out that it has long been the policy of the state auditor and other government finance officers that the appropriate way to pay for capital projects to serve the residents of a political subdivision going forward in the future is to finance it so that those who benefit from those projects are the ones who pay for it, as opposed to, for instance, charging taxpayers, say, $137 million in current tax revenue, sitting on it and building a project to benefit future taxpayers who will have the advantage of the capital projects that are being funded but don't have to pay for them. So it has been the state's policy that bond financing for capital projects is appropriate in terms of equity among taxpayers so that those who have the project to use in the future, the roads, the buildings, the public buildings, the public projects, will be the ones who pay for those projects ones who pay for those projects as opposed to having taxpayers contribute tax money that is not spent for them but is spent for future generations. So, just a little reality check, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you. So, are there any other questions? See, none. Brings to Bill 7795. I need a motion to accept the dot 1 version.
Amend by the dot.
Kewen. Do what?
Amend by the dot 1.
Amend by the dot 1 version, yes. Mr. Kewen.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Cascalli.
Second by Cascalli. Do I have motions, motion for a second reading by title only of 7795 dot 1?
Is your vote on that motion?
Kewen, I'm sorry, hold on, hold on.
Sorry.
All in favor for the dot 1?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion second for, motion for a second reading by title only.
Cascalli.
Motion by Cascalli, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7795 dot 1 has amended second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of special obligation bonds Series 2025A and special obligation bond Series 2025B of the City of O'Fallon, Missouri, and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Thank you. Motion final approval?
Cascalli.
Motion by Cascalli, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. Questions or comments? Please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Seven yes, one no. 7795 dot 1 pass becomes ordinance number?
7255.
7255. Thank you, Bess. Brings us to the Committee and Commission Reports. Questions or comments? Stand is read. Consent calendar. Ms. Taylor.
Yes, I wanted to make a motion to separate number 11 on the Consent Calendar Resolution 25G to discuss and vote on separately.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Taylor to remove Resolution 112025G and vote on it separately. Do I have a second?
Second.
Kewen. Second by Councilman Kewen. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to Consent Calendar minus Resolution 2025G.
Motion to approve, Cascalli.
Ragsdale.
Motion by Cascalli, second by Councilman Ragsdale. Councilmen, councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Eight yes, zero no. Consent calendar has been approved. Brings us to Resolution 112025G. Ms. Taylor, you have a question or comment? Wait a minute. Yeah, questions, comments on the resolution. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, like I had been preaching about, preaching about, and I'm not going to say I'm not going to be a broken record on that, but it has to definitely, this raised red flags for me that it had only two bidders, but not only that, the price difference and price cost in the two bids is 100%. I also have been receiving some emails and messages from people that, I mean, this is a roofing contractor, and people in the field that were concerned. They were like, no way can this, this company do the project at that cost. So, that was my thing, that I think, I don't know, we should not vote for this. I think it needs to be rebid or something because this just doesn't sit right with me at all.
Mr. Mitchison?
Uh, Mayor, I'll take it if you don't mind. Just a little bit of information on this bid process. This bid was open for a month, and during that month, we had a pre-bid meeting that had six different contractors come to the meeting. Of those six, only two chose to bid. As for the discrepancy, I certainly can't speak for the companies, and I won't try to try to do that, but we did, because of this discrepancy, our staff did meet with the low bidder following the bids coming in and the opening to make sure that they really understood what we were trying to do with the project, that they could handle the project, and that their bid was not a mistake, quite honestly, and we were comfortable coming out of that, that the bid was appropriate and they could handle the project.
Mr. Kewen.
Councilmember Taylor, you're sitting down. I actually, the two bids doesn't bother me. The discrepancy between the two bothers me a lot. You know, I've sat up here before and told you, I've been doing this for 35 years, including for an awful lot of public bids. That discrepancy between those two says something's wrong. If I may, Mr. Drabell, how did the low bidder match up with our, with our budget, with our estimate?
We were under budget.
No, but I assumed we were under, but are we under a lot?
Overall, yes.
Okay.
I mean, but that's citywide, Councilman, from the copper dome to all of the roofs, citywide.
Right. Understood. Honestly, with that kind of discrepancy, it would be my recommendation to send it back out for bid. It's just, it's just too far apart. And my guess is, is that if the contractor thinks they got everything, maybe they think they got everything, maybe, I hate to say it, maybe they see that there's some extras that can come after later, and that's what they're counting on. Yeah, that kind of discrepancy, that doesn't pass the sniff test. Sorry.
Mr. Ragsdale.
Thank you. In all my years of auditing and being an accountant, it's always, red flags always put me on high alert that there's over a 60% discrepancy between these two bids and the fact that there is only two bids and no other bids to even look at. It's very concerning, and, I'm sorry, what did I say?
It said work.
Oh. I should, do you want me to say I'm taking Ms. Taylor's place and not yours? I'm sorry. I'm teasing to both of you. But I just, I, it's our responsibility to be good stewards of your tax dollars, and I cannot in good conscience, even though this other was the low bid, I cannot in good conscience vote in favor of this resolution since there's such a discrepancy.
Okay. Ms. Cook, do you have something?
Well, I was just going to add, you know, if we did go ahead and vote for this lowest bidder, I would, as a city, go to them and tell them, under no circumstances do not come back to us for a change order. What you bid is what you'll get. You can tell people not to come back for change orders.
You can tell them, but they're, they're going to come anyway.
Well, then, they're not going to get it.
They're not.
So, but, but the city needs to stand firm and let them know what you bid is what you get, you know? Don't, don't keep coming back to us and nickel and diming us for more and more.
Mr. Cascalli.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for legal counsel, if we can either be excused or if, if we need to table this and have that conversation at a different time.
I, I would, as a matter of course, recommend that any conversation you want to have with me not be held in this forum.
Can we be excused?
If the council wishes to hold a closed, recess and hold a closed meeting, that would require a motion and vote.
I, before you make that motion, Mr. Snowden.
I guess what I would say is there's an optical issue in which we're inviting any future bidders to be sure that they bid at higher than this because I, I feel like that, that's sending a message to the next set of bidders. It is a danger. There is a way that you may want to consider in which we would request that the low bidder put up payment and performance bonds to ensure that we are covered if this does go south. I, I don't know that that's a better answer, but it is a potential way to not only get the low bid but ensure we actually get the job that we're supposed to get out of that low bidder. I, I have a very large concern that the next set of bids will be incredibly high, and we can pick whichever incredibly high bid we want. That's all I have, sir. May I speak?
No.
All right.
Ms. Thompson.
Did we, I'm sure we did analysis on both the high bidder and the low bidder. Were there, like, specific areas where there were big gaps, or was it just generally across the board?
So, during this process, we knew the magnitude of the scope of work. We actually hired Graco Consulting to help us through the bid process, and actually, he is here tonight, and he was the one that actually vetted both of these. So, we had post-interviews with the low bidder. And if he would, he could speak.
I mean, he asked me if he could speak, and I told him, no, but.
That's a different person.
Oh.
Mr. Mitchison's referring to our consultant.
Okay. So, if you want, this is up to the council, I mean, Mr. Cascalli, if you want to make a motion, but, you know, I told the bidder that he could not speak, but if this council wishes him to speak, that's this council's prerogative.
You don't need permission to have our consultants.
I don't, no, I don't have to have our permission for a consultant to speak, but for the bidder to speak, I do need your permission.
This is the low bidder?
Huh? Yes, he's the low bidder.
Make a motion.
Huh?
Can we hear from the consultant first?
It's up to you.
That's what I would like to do.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to have the consultant come up.
Have the consultant come up and then let the.
Well, let's just get through that first, and then we can.
Well, I don't need, I don't need a motion for the consultant to speak.
Okay, then let's just do that.
Yeah, I just want to introduce Mike Trower. He's with Graco Consultants. They've helped us in previous years when we actually had to replace the copper dome back in, I think, 2015. They were the consultant that helped us with this, with the project then, and that was, like Bill was saying, we re-engaged them for helping with these projects because of the magnitude of that hailstorm and the damage that was caused to make sure we're spending our insurance money, proceeds, and all that as effectively as we can, so this is.
So, again, this is not taxpayer money, this is insurance money.
I don't know all the ins and the outs. All I know is we're working with insurance proceeds that Bill's been tracking, and I think others know a little bit more about it, to the specifics than I do, so I would let them speak to that.
Okay. Before you speak, is that correct, Mr. Mitchison?
Yes, 100% of this will be paid by insurance proceeds.
Thank you. So, if you give us your name and address for the record.
Sure. My, my name's Michael Trower. I live at 141 Inglewood Court, St. Charles, Missouri.
Okay.
So, through the bid process, obviously, with running bid processes for roof replacements, it's not uncommon that we have had cost differences between the low and the high bid. When that happens, usually what I will do is look at the total costs for certain buildings or the overall project and try to break down a unit cost for each building that's being replaced to see if it makes sense. In this case, there was a discrepancy, obviously, everyone can see that. When I had the bid, the two bids, each bid is broken down by premises for the location that they're working at. I'll just throw an example out, that the senior care facility behind here, that is a shingle replacement, remove and replace of the shingles, gutters, and downspouts. The, the unit cost of the low bid for that project on that building is about $7, a little over a square foot. For a shingle replacement, that comes within reasonable price for that unit cost. And the buildings that I checked that would qualify the number, the unit costs that I calculated were all in reason. I didn't find any red flags, you know? Perhaps some locations were a little bit lower than others, but there wasn't any red flags where I felt it was out of line.
Ms. Thompson.
You looked at the other bid as well, correct?
Correct.
So, what stood out to you as being crazy high, or, I mean, was there, was there a big difference in unit costs? Was it specific to a certain building or a certain region?
So, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but across the board, everything was higher, obviously, on the high bid. You know, without having the numbers in front of me, I can't really specify one thing in particular that seemed out of line or high on that bid, but across the board, it was higher.
It seems like there's a lot of questions about this. I don't feel comfortable moving forward. I would like to see the numbers and look into it more. So, I say we make a motion to table it. And discuss it more, maybe, maybe even a workshop.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
Give a second.
Just hold on.
He'll call for it.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Now, do you want the low bidder to speak?
Yes. Yes.
Give us your name and address for the record. I'll give you three minutes.
My name is Mark Rhodey. I'm owner and general manager of Rhodey Exteriors, 520 Court in Glen Carbon, Illinois. We are the low bidder on this project. I try to keep my comments brief within the three minutes. First thing I'd like to say is something has been mentioned about a payment and performance bond that is part of that contract. If you don't know what that means, that literally means we have a bonding company that is backing up the fact that we will complete the job for the amount. If we don't, if we can't, then they pay to bring somebody else and complete that job for us. On our side of things, if they do that, they turn around and sue my company and me personally. And so, the number that you're looking at in front of you, you may think it's a red flag. I have staked the future of my 18-year-old company and the livelihood of my family on the fact that we can do this work. We've done this work many times before. Part of the process is we've submitted to the city many references, many similar jobs, et cetera, et cetera. We pass all of that. With regard to the high bidder, I'm fairly confident, I have all of his subs bids in my file, too, and they are extremely high. But I have other subcontractors that have worked with us before that do good work, that come highly recommended, that are certified with their manufacturers and so on, and we wanted the job, so we used subs that were more interested, that would provide more competitive bids. And so, we, we have thoroughly checked this bid again and again. I don't put out over a $3 million bid very lightly. As you've heard, the city has worked with us, the roof consultant has worked with us. Our bid has passed muster on every, on every line. We're confident in it, and we're, we're ready to get started as a first of the year. I will offer, if it makes anybody on this council feel better, I'd be glad to add $1.5 million to the bid.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Taylor. Come on back up.
You said you get subs that are competitive. Are, you know, these workers, are they local? And are they paid, like, a prevailing wage?
Certainly. Prevailing wage is absolutely part of the project and by law must be done. Again, we submitted all of our past experience. We do a whole lot of government work. We work prevailing wage jobs all of the time. We have a long list of those in our history, and if it's not already in the paperwork, we would offer up those contacts, those architects, those city and county contacts that will vouch for us. So, yes, I mean, we've, we've, we certainly pay prevailing wage. All that's required, it gets done on certified reports.
Because one of the messages I received was actually from, like, a sheet metal worker, and they were saying, looking at the scope of the project, that just alone for sheet metal work, they were talking about 11,000 or man-hours for this project. I mean, if you do those calculations, that's almost a million dollars just for that part, and wages, and this is a $3 million project, and I know, you know. And this is a $3 million project and I know, you know, supplies and things aren't cheap. So I, I just can't see how this could be done with that low of amount. And they seem to agree.
Well, with all due respect, they, I would, obviously, I don't know who they are. I would assume their reason for calling you is because they have a dog in the fight. And there were two of us and they're not with me. So I have an assumption as to who they're with. Again, I'll point you back to the roof consultant. The appropriate city officials have looked at our numbers. I can't speak to how quickly or slowly an unknown contractor works or the amount of work they get done. I can tell you, we've got a long history that we can put in front of you and references that you can call that we've performed again and again. And again, I'll point you back to, we will be fully bonded. And if I can't do it, you are protected as the city. The money will be there for somebody else to do it and I will be looking for a new job.
And you said, I asked about local, like all of these are all local? All your employees, all that will be working on the project?
Local in the sense of St. Louis metro area. We do have one sub that is out of Kansas, I believe, that travels around to a lot of places. Vast majority of who we're using is St. Louis metro area.
Anybody else? Mr. Kuhn?
Mr. Mitchison, if I may, do we have letters of recommendation on this, on this contractor?
To your question specifically, if you're referring to like a recommendation letter, we didn't require that as part of the bid.
Understood.
We require references. Mr. Trower checked with some references and had good reviews from it. That's typically all we go with is the references and do our own due diligence if we know some other things that we can look into. But we've done the due diligence on this like we, we do with all of our projects and made sure that we were comfortable putting forward to you guys for the approval.
Right. If I may ask, how many references?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I don't have...
Is it two? Is it five? Is it?
Uh...
I won't hold you to the number.
You talked, you talked to how many?
Oh, I talked to two.
He talked to two specifically, and I don't remember how many were in the... Do you remember how many references he gave? I can look. I think I got the bid there if you want me to, so.
Okay. That's all I have. Mr. Exdale?
As a woman, it's my prerogative to change my mind. And since I made such a big point earlier of being steward of your tax dollars, hearing more information about it, that it's insurance money and not your tax dollars, and hearing about the bonding, I feel a little bit more confident in this whole process than I did five minutes ago. So I just want to, I just want to explain, if I change my vote, you'll kind of know why.
Okay.
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
I just wanted to say that after hearing what we've heard, I'm really comfortable with moving forward with this as well. I think there's very little risk to the city.
Can I just, I just want to add that just looking through the, the bid, we have similar projects. So basically, each one of them would be considered a reference to me that we could call at any time. I gave the, we've got two pages of people.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if the two that Mr. Trower talked to were on this list. I'm sure they were. But either way, we had, we had significant...
Mr. Kuhn?
Well, honestly, that, that gives me a lot of warm fuzzy feelings. People don't typically list a reference if they think they're going to give them anything but a dollar reference. So I'm not a woman, but I also reserve the, reserve the right to change my mind and I appreciate this back and forth. It's given me a lot more confidence. So thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Cascala?
Motion to approve Cascala.
Second, Thompson.
I have a motion by Cascala, second by Councilman Thompson, to approve Resolution G. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe?
Resolution 10...
Oh, wait, I opposed.
You didn't say it, so...
Opposed to picking this bid?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Motion to approve. This is a motion to approve Resolution G.
Oh, I'm a nay.
Seven to one. Amanda Taylor is voting no.
You don't need me.
Huh?
There's nothing for me.
Well, you need, do we not need to read the resolution or not?
It was on the consent agenda.
Oh, okay. That passes. Seven to one. All right. New business. We have a public comment considering granting a conditional use permit to the owners of Phoenix Real Estate Service to allow senior living community in a C2 general business district under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located on property on the south side of Mexico Road between Bryan and Governor's Run Court within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri. Is there somebody here to present this?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Jeff Simmons with Bax Engineering, 221 Point West Boulevard, St. Charles. I'm here tonight, as the mayor mentioned, to seek approval of a conditional use permit for a senior living overlay on a parcel that's currently Zoned C2 for the villages at Hillman Farm. The owner is Baldridge, Mexico LLC, and the developer under contract is Phoenix Real Estate. The site is located east of Bryan Road on Mexico Road, surrounded on the west by Walgreens, to the south by another senior living center, and to the east by Governor's Run Court. It is not associated with the other senior living center. The building itself is going to be just over 21,800 square feet. It will be three stories with a central entrance. We have water quality and detention basins on either side, walking trails, gazebos and pavilions throughout. This is a rendering of what the building will look like. And again, this is a part of that much-needed senior housing for O'Fallon. I'd be happy to answer any questions or step aside for public comment.
Questions for Jeff? Ms. Taylor?
So has this been approved by the Housing Development Commission? Not yet?
I can't answer that. I don't know if it's, I know it's gone through the process. I don't know at what stage it gets approved. If it needs your approval first, I'm not sure. And unfortunately, the developer's not here with...
I believe it needs our approval first before they vote on it, if I'm not mistaken.
So we have to vote for this before they...
Well, this won't be voted on until December anyway.
Oh, yeah. But I was just confused, you know, this even hadn't been approved and we're voting for like the conditional use permit.
Ms. Taylor, I will get you that information prior to the final vote.
Anybody else? All right, Jeff, you would step aside. Mr. Dino.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This neighborhood has had some issues. And so I asked some questions at the planning and zoning and the owner got up and he stated that he is, has no affiliation with the Columbia-based father-son millionaire team. And he's formed an LLC called Baldridge Mexico Road LLC. So the villages at Hillman Farm evidently are separate and distinct from the other Hillman properties that are currently built on Mexico behind Walgreens and the daycare. We need stable senior living options. And so I believe this is going to offer that. There needs to be safe and secure, not taking advantage of any senior citizens. And I know one council member who's worked on many issues in the Hillman neighborhood, that current developer, not this developer, but that current developer has been taking advantage of citizens. And also, Ms. Cook also knows where they were charging, which is illegal according to the Missouri revised state statutes, they were charging without meters, water bills and other utilities.
Mr. Dino, if this has something to do, that has nothing to do with Hillman?
I know. Exactly. But I'm saying, I want to...
You need to stay on the conditional use permit for this location.
What I'm trying to say, until you interrupted me, was I want to make sure that senior citizens are not taken advantage of, that we're not billing them illegally utilities that are part of their rent because this person is going to the state of Missouri and is asking two different commissions, the Missouri Housing Finance Commission and the Missouri Affordable Housing Authority, low-interest loans on the backs of taxpayers to make profits for this individual, and he doesn't have a right to take advantage of senior citizens of our community. I will not stand for it. Other council members will not stand for it because Hillman Place is the example that we want to avoid. And that's the point that I was trying to get across. So there needs to be benchmarks with this person who's getting housing credits and low-interest construction loans that you and I don't get when we build our homes. There needs to be a better response this time with this phase to residents and not billing residents, which is illegal according to the Missouri state statutes. For those reasons, I support this senior housing endeavor. I don't support the low-interest rates and the loans and the giveaways and tax incentives that this person gets because they formed a liability, for liability purposes, Baldridge Mexico Road LLC. But I do support this plan in its generality. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other citizens' comments for the public hearing, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment. Any other questions? Mr. Wexler?
Yeah, I think at planning and zoning, they asked maybe if there was anything you could do on the west end for better access to the sidewalk. Did anything ever come of that? I think that was on this one. Was there anything you could do? I know it's pretty steep there.
If I remember, yeah. Again, I was not the presenter, but I believe the issue is the grades over there. It's, there's a significant grade change.
Okay.
So very, not, not very practical.
Okay. That's what I need. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Cook?
Thank you. I know this is for a conditional use permit. If for some reason we approve this and they don't get approval from the state, does that just fall off? Does that CUP just go away?
If a conditional use permit is not used within a period of time after approval, it, it lapses.
And is that our one year that we typically do?
I'll defer to Mr. Woods.
Yeah, one year for that. And the site plan would be part of that too.
Okay, so he has to get approval from the state and he has to submit everything into the, the only reason I'm asking is he's got something out in St. Peters that is, he got approval for over two years ago and he hasn't even done anything with. So that's why I was asking about the CUP, that if we grant this and it doesn't ever happen right away, so it just, will just go away? Perfect. Thank you.
Then it stays C2.
It stays C2.
Yeah, because that's what it's on right now.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Reach the bill 7797, most for first reading.
Kuhn?
Most by Councilman Kuhn, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Kuhn, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 7797, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owners of Phoenix Real Estate Services to allow a senior living community in a C2 general business district under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located on property on the south side of Mexico Road between Bryan Road and Governor's Run Court within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Next is a public comment considering granting a conditional use permit to the owner of Dobbs Tire and Auto to allow automobile and other motor vehicle repair services in a C2 general business district under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 708 Caledonia Drive within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Good evening.
Name and address, please.
Elliot Reed with Cochran Engineering, 530A East Independence Drive and Union. 9,000 square foot Dobbs, 10 bay at the corner of Caledonia Drive and Highway DD. 52 parking spaces. They will be open from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday, or yes, Monday through Saturday. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the project.
Questions from the council? If you would step aside. I have a whole lot of speakers. And just for the audience out there, there is no vote on this or the scooters tonight. This is first reading only. So just to let you know, there is no vote. This won't be voted on until the December meeting. So just to give you a heads up, so... First speaker, Mr. Dino.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. First of all, want to say my, I'm opposed as I was at planning and zoning to this Dobbs location of a conditional use permit. This is not something that we need another Dobbs. We need something that's unique to this community and unique to this neighborhood. You're going to hear from speakers behind me that have spent over $1 million in homes. They were sold a bill of goods. They were sold something that means community, means something, not just another Dobbs. I want to be very upfront. The city council has developed or created another political jurisdiction under Chapter 67 of the Missouri revised state statutes, creating the Caledonia Improvement, or Community Improvement District. That district, which these residents behind me don't know, that they charge more taxes, more sales taxes. So this puts this Dobbs on an uneven playing field amongst going to the other Dobbs or other tire-related businesses to get car repairs or tires put on your vehicle. So right there, you guys created another jurisdiction, another political body, charging more taxes. I'm going to boycott this Dobbs. I'm not going to shop there. I'm not going to shop anywhere in Caledonia because you're charging more taxes, just like you do in pockets across our city. And I'm tired of you not being diligent and transparent with that information. Now, in terms of this conditional use permit, if you do grant it another Dobbs, I have some problems with M4 water quality, meeting regulations with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, which has state laws, promulgated rules and regulations for tires, for disposal of chemicals, for storage of chemicals, hazardous materials, tire mitigation, fluids. And then also, they don't want to put a full sidewalk connectivity around this property to make it a walkable and a movement type oriented to keep pedestrians safe in terms of public traffic safety. There's also some tree planting. I think they could do a much better job in tree planting. But the whole premise is, is you're going to hear from speakers behind me who are passionate and who spent over a million dollars in their home just recently. And now they're going to have to look at the back of a tire center, a Dobbs, neon signs with a coffee center. And I don't think that this is the appropriate thing. I think you should have worked out the deal with something that is more better for the city, more better in terms of a neighborhood business, that's more like a Newtown-type business. For those reasons, I cannot support this Dobbs. Yeah, they're going to pay sales tax, but guess what? These people behind me who shop and do business there are going to pay more sales tax.
Dino, time's up, sir.
Defeat this bill.
All right. Next speaker is Rose Zook. Name and address for the record, please.
Rose Zook, 8007 Oak Grove Court, O'Fallon, Missouri. And I just want to say that I'm against the Dobbs Tire and the scooters. They're sitting on five acres of land. A bank is going to go in there, so you're going to crowd that five acres with three buildings. And I just heard 57 parking lots for Dobbs. And that's crazy. And I oppose this.
Thank you. Maduka Khan-Palham? Hey, I tried.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maduka Pasham. And our address is 309 Castleford Boulevard, O'Fallon, Missouri. I oppose both these bills, 7798, 7799. Because, you know, there's all disturbing factors there, like, you know, sounds, and then I don't know what kind of nuisance is going to be there, which is not good for that community. That community is a beautiful community, with lots of greenery, lots of lakes and all. It's a very beautiful community. And I spent more than $1 million on my home just to get that, looking at the community. And at that time, I didn't know that things are going to be this way, going to be done this way. If you look at the financial factors also, revenue factors, the moment these kind of, you know, bills are approved and the construction is done, the values of the homes, of 250 homes, more than 250 homes in that community, will go down. And the taxes, property taxes, and those will also go down, right? So that is also not beneficial to the county and the city. So everybody will be losing it. So that is just one part of it, right? And the other part of it is the beautiness of the community and the peacefulness of the community, and the look and feel of the community will go down, you know? So the values and then our, the, you know, the disturbances and a lot of parking lots, you know, 57, that's what I hear now. So those are all some disturbing factors as a resident of the community. I strongly oppose both the bills.
Okay, thank you, sir. Vamit, I'm not even going to try your last name. If you would give your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Hi, my name is Viniti Malini, and I live in 526 Green Gage Timber Drive in the Caledonia subdivision. And I'm here to oppose these two bills, 7798 and 7799. Primarily, I mean, as everyone was talking about, I mean, it's around the same, same reasons. And also, we kind of share the same road, basically, in the neighborhood. And there is no, there is no division, I mean, meaning there is no fence or anything, right? So and, and it's a prime location for a bus stop where all children would get into it. And with access, there is no, there's no, with a lot of traffic around the same, right, increase of traffic around the roundabout, I believe there was a mention of creating another access road. So I believe it would be a traffic impact with this new access road, increase of traffic, and basically the safety of our children playing around over there. Because, as I said, no, it's, it doesn't have any, we share the same road, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am resident of Streets of Caledonia on Dahl Reja Boulevard. I respectfully ask the council to deny this conditional use of permits like 7798 bill and 7799, the auto repair facility, which is not, I mean, which is incompatible with our community right now. And this facility will increase a lot of traffic. And if you see around the evening time, there are a lot of kids playing with their bikes, walking around, running around. So this kind of project will not let the kids to play freely. And then also, the auto facility will, like, release a lot of oils and other materials which are hazardous for the soil, like someone said, like it will degrade the quality of water underneath, and which is also not good for the environment. So I would request council to deny this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Ryan Berg.
Good evening, Ryan Berg. I live at 525 Green Gage Timber Drive. Members of council, thank you for the time to speak and be heard. Like many of my neighbors, I oppose this. One, from a practical standpoint, there are three Dobbs within five miles of that location. I don't think we need another tire shop. Dobbs is a great business. They're kind people. They do good work. I'm a customer. I can drive three to five miles. I think everybody else can agree. I would also say from a standpoint of each of you, when you bought your homes, you had a vision of what that would be.
Noise, safety risks, security, environmental concerns, and economic harm. A tire and auto shop is not an appropriate addition to a residential neighborhood where $1 million-plus homes reside mere feet away. My home is less than three minutes walking distance from this location, and I'm concerned for the negative impact this operation will have on the quality of life of homeowners in our neighborhood and the financial impact. For one, noise pollution is unavoidable with such a business. Auto shops involve power tools, air compressors, engine revving, regular vehicle traffic. These sounds disrupt the peace that residents reasonably expect in their homes. Increased traffic and safety hazards are also major concerns. Tire and auto shops attract a steady stream of customers, delivery trucks, tow vehicles. This added traffic can induce the, increase the risk of accidents. Streets used by pedestrians, bicyclists, children would become less safe in more congestion. It also discourages outdoor activities like walking and jogging. Auto repair businesses generate waste products such as oil, lubricants, tires, chemical solvents. Even with proper handling, there's always the risk of spills, leaks, improper disposal, etc. Such incidents can contaminate soil and local waterways and introduce unpleasant odors. There are also economic considerations, especially regarding property values. Numerous studies indicate that the presence of industrial operations in close proximity to homes can lower surrounding property values. Home buyers tend to avoid neighborhoods near noisy or potentially hazardous businesses, which harms existing homeowners. I read on the staff report of the O'Fallon Planning and Zoning Under Staff Recommendations finding item 2, "It does not appear that this use will have negative impacts on the surrounding properties." What is this finding based on? Was an actual study conducted, or at least a real estate professional consulted? When the staff report says it does not appear that this use will have negative impacts on the surrounding properties, that doesn't sound definitive. The city of O'Fallon has ordinance that requires no injury to property value. These sound like conclusory statements. Ordinance 400325A3 requires that the proposed conditional use will not cause substantial injury to the value of the other property in the neighborhood in which it is to be located. In the staff report, it indicates that they are already requesting that a 10-foot-wide walking trail be reduced to a 4-foot-wide sidewalk. This is already an indication that they intend to dilute the highest standards established in the development. Section 400325 Planning and Zoning Ordinance, number 7042, line item A2, quote, "The proposed conditional use at the specified location will contribute to and promote the welfare or convenience of the public." How will adding this Dobbs add more convenience to residents when there is a firestone five minutes away and a Dobbs six minutes away?
You have 15 seconds.
In the same section, "If the facts in the case do not establish that the findings standard set forth in this chapter will apply to the proposed use, the conditional use will be denied." Where does the information exist that shows that Dobbs Auto has actually met these requirements?
Thank you. Sweeta Kuchalapati at 500 Green Gage Timber? 524 Green Gage Timber Drive. Zach?
Zach.
Zach? Okay.
Zach Summers at 524 Green Gage Timber Drive. I oppose the Dobbs and the scooters. They're just going to cause too much noise, chaos in the neighborhood.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Rochelle.
Rochelle. I tried.
How are you?
I'm good.
My name is Rochelle Wabi. I live at 508 Green Gage Timber Drive, and I am here to oppose both the scooters and the Dobbs. I know you've heard about the safeties. If you go down our neighborhood, any given good day, you will not be able to drive the speed limit. There is a plethora of kids everywhere. And I think you guys see the map right there. This, the Dobbs and the scooter are quite literally sharing the roads with these homes. I think that approving this is just negligent to the safety of these children. And there are six lots around this development that I think really need to care, we really need to carefully pick out what we allow in those areas. I don't think it's fair to the community. I don't think it's fair to us. I don't think it would be fair to anyone involved, other than, of course, the developers or anyone that might be benefiting from the developers. Another thing I would like to say, oh, I think there are far better locations than this. I think that if we just turn around 180 degrees, there's a plethora of open land that is waiting to be sold to someone all along the highway, all along Highway 40. I don't know why we, we are deciding to go as close to the neighborhood as possible. There are so many other options. So I would like those to be considered before a decision is reached as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Les Pertle?
Thank you very much, Les Pertle, 606 Strathclyde Drive, Caledonia. My wife and I have lived in Caledonia for about two and a half years. Terrific place to live. Prior to that, we lived in Carriage Hills subdivision, which is about three miles away, down 40. We lived there 33 years. Some of you may remember that 20 years ago, a resolution came up, Frank Lita Honda, Frank Lita wanted to put a new dealership right where our subdivision is, similar to what is going to happen with Dobbs and scooters. Well, a business meeting was held, and I personally and other people got up and talked about this situation. We talked about the traffic that it would add, the lights, the noise. I was in the car business for 15 years before I retired, and I can tell you, those torque wrenches are loud. wrenches are loud. They're going to hear them down Dalriada and anywhere near there. But anyway, I just wanted to say very much against it. What happened in that case was, some of you may remember, Frank Lita decided to put his dealership down where it should be, in a commercial area, a mile away, at the auto mall. They're doing well. That empty lot next to our subdivision's still sitting there. What such a good place to put a commercial business. Thank you.
Thank you. Zachary Wright?
Mr. Mayor, he had to step out. He's back.
Okay.
Zachary Wright, 104 Downview Drive, in opposition of Dobbs and Scooters. Just like all of my neighbors have noted, you know, this is a family residential community that, you know, I have three young kids that need to walk to the bus stop every day, and this bus stop is very close to where these businesses are going to be built. Also, as Cavalli noted, he's right next door to where these are being built. I'm three doors down. My kids walk to his house all the time and play. The main concern is the traffic and safety, but there's also the lights, the noise, the environmental effect of it on our community. And we were sold a, you know, a bill of goods where this was going to be built with green space, with walkable shops, community-style businesses that really, you know, are catered to families. So that's my position. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Pearl, resident of Streets of Caledonia, address 606 Highland Prairie Drive. O'Fallon promotes itself as a bikeable and walkable community. It's on your website. It's in the comprehensive plan for the city. It's also part of St. Charles County, and it's part, that's part of St. Charles County's master plan. It emphasizes mixed-use developments with integrated residential, retail, office, and recreational spaces. Connectivity through sidewalks, public paths, and greenways, and community-oriented spaces that encourage pedestrian activity and reduce reliance on automobiles. The Dobbs project is all about automobiles and nothing about the pedestrian. If you look at the areas around other Dobbs locations, there's really zero pedestrian traffic around those. They're all, it's all automobile. What we have with Streets of Caledonia is an opportunity to build from the ground up an area that's walkable, bikeable, ties in with paths. It's in the plan to put paths in, connecting subdivisions to O'Day Park, to Bush Wildlife, and the greenways in the area. Putting a Dobbs in will just make that worse, maybe not happen. The Planning and Zoning Commission's report that was submitted with this, the findings, the findings, were to proceed with, to use this location to promote public welfare and convenience, which I disagree with. The use should not cause substantial injury to the value of the property in the neighborhood, which, that is probably not true. And the use should not dominate the immediate neighborhood. It will definitely dominate the neighborhood because of the lighting and all the traffic that is right at the entrance to the neighborhoods. I don't know what the answer is to keep developers from thinking that it's a good idea to put drive-throughs and automobile service into a residential area like this. Maybe the zoning needs to be changed.
You have 15 seconds.
I think the develop needs to be more in line with the soccer, the redeveloped movie theater, and the other, the construction and approved projects for, on that side of the property. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is John Cole. And on deck is Martha Cole.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Cole. I live at 308 Castleford Boulevard. I'm a relative newcomer to O'Fallon, but my wife grew up in O'Fallon. When I retired in 2021, we decided to build our home in Castleford Boulevard on Caledonia, in Caledonia. Living in Caledonia has been great. The street layout around our subdivision has a few hotspots with a heightened risk of traffic accidents. One of these hotspots is at the intersection of Castleford Boulevard and Dalriada. Whenever I leave our subdivision, I'm extra vigilant at this intersection because there's a nonstop 40 mile per hour traffic coming from both directions, and that's just when cars are not exceeding the speed limit. In addition, you're partially sight limited looking in both directions. On your right, the traffic on Dalriada is coming up a hill, and it's not visible until it's fairly close. On your left, there's only a short distance from Double D to Castleford, so there's also a limited time to see any fast-moving traffic. As a result, a driver on Castleford wishing to make a left turn on Dalriada has a short decision window to clear the intersection for traffic coming from both directions. I believe the proposed Scooters Coffee will further heighten the safety risk at this intersection. Any cars making a left turn from Dalriada onto the new access road to go to Scooters will have the right of way over cars from Castleford. In addition, cars leaving Scooters and using the access road to go back to the traffic circle will present a new challenge. Drivers from Castleford will now have to contend with traffic converging on this intersection from three directions. I'd also note that the drivers who are leaving Scooters by this route will have an even greater sight restriction on any cars coming up the hill on their left from Dalriada. Finally, the morning rush hour is a peak time for traffic coming out of our subdivision to going to Double D via the traffic circle. I believe this will also be a peak time for Scooters customer traffic. As a result, there'll be more potential for cars queuing up at the traffic circle to join Double D, and this will create additional traffic risks that are not present today. Because of these serious traffic safety concerns, I'm opposed to the request for the proposed Scooter Coffee location. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Martha Cole, and I live at 308 Castleford Boulevard in the Streets of In addition to the concerns my neighbors have voiced about the children in the neighborhood, you see people out in the morning going for a run or walking the dog, I would like to speak to the traffic concerns, specifically the Scooters. A coffee kiosk does a high volume of their business in the morning with cars. That is the business model. You're going to see a lot of cars. They've got a big drive-through lane, 12 cars it looks like can park in there. When they exit Scooters, they can't get back on Double D. You can get into that plot of land from Double D, but you have to use the access road to get back to Double D. There's no other way. So what are they going to do? They're going to turn right on that access road, and then they're going to turn right on Dalriada to get back to the traffic circle. Now, in the morning, because we live there, we know, there is a steady stream of cars coming up a hill on Double D to get to that traffic circle to then get to 64. And the cars coming out of Scooters are going to have to yield to that traffic, particularly if you want to go westbound on 64, you need to be able to get over into that left lane. So, it's, the traffic on volume on Double D is only going to get worse as more homes are built farther out. But what I'm saying is the Scooters traffic, because it's going to be a steady stream of cars, if they want to make any money, they're going to back up on Dalriada because they can't get into the traffic circle. This is going to impact our residents who are just trying to get out, get to work, get their kids to school, whatever. O'Fallon has other coffee businesses on Highway K, on Bryan Road, on Main Street. Their customers can exit these coffee kiosks and get back to the main road, whichever one, without having to drive alongside residences and create a hardship for my neighbors. Thank you for listening to my concerns about the Scooters, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Jennifer Dowling?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jen Dowling, and I live at 111 Downview Drive. And I left y'all maps because I'm a visual person, and while we are represented by Ward Number Three, I can't expect the other council members to understand why we are all so upset. There's thousands of homes in O'Fallon and lots of neighborhoods, so this is simply just the soccer moms. I literally took a picture off of our Google Maps while at soccer and snapped it, but I wanted y'all to just visually see what we're so upset about. So there's really six lots that somehow got zoned C2, which, as you know, C2 is general business. I don't know anything about the zoning laws or how y'all change it. That's where y'all's expertise come in, but they really should have been zoned C1, which is limited adjacent neighborhoods. So if you look at the map, right now, we've got a Scooters proposed, a Bank of Old Monroe. Nobody's going to come up here and complain about Old Bank of Old Monroe. It's a low-traffic thing. It requires people to come, park their car. It's banking hours. It's quiet. But our main issue with the planning of specifically the Dobbs, I want y'all to understand why we're upset. Streets of Caledonia is a high-end neighborhood with the average price home going over for $641. It was kind of divided up into two sections, the soccer side and then the amenity sides with the pool. The soccer side, most of the homes sold for over $850,000, reaching over to $1 million. I personally pay $13,000 a year for the privilege to live in that little two-by-four of a neighborhood. Why did I do that? Why did I spend that kind of money? My life savings, I'm almost 50 years old. My husband's 61. Our life savings is in that home. Why did I do it? Because it backed up to Augusta Wildlife, and this is what we were promised, not only from real estate agents, but published articles and publications. So I'd like to share with you an article that was written, even as recent as April 24, in Mid Rivers Magazine. It was entitled, "The Streets of Caledonia Development Has Come a Long Way Since Announced in 2017." And this is what has been promised to the residents to encourage us to spend these high-dollar amounts on these homes. And as Councilmember from Ward Four said, "This is like one of the best places to retire." Why? The original plan included 93 acres of mixed-use retail development, entertainment, office space, medical and hospitality space. Some of that has started, and much more is to come. Nobody screamed an auto tire shop with wrenches and air compressors going off at 7:00 in the morning and drive-throughs that are going to be backing up into our neighborhood. What we were envisioned and what we were told is, hey, this is the Streets of Caledonia. It's going to be like the streets of St. Charles. Even if you drive up further on the road onto Winghaven, they have a commercial-use property. It's a nice brick building that's a retail center. There's a pharmacy in there. There's an emergency pet vet. There's a salon. It's not high-traffic businesses. It's all businesses that require you to park your vehicle and to enter that business for a short period of time and leave. That's what the vision was. And so, as y'all continue to develop this land, there is more land on the other side of First Community Bank and Highway 64 that is not within a baseball, I mean, I'm not a good throw, and I can stand in my neighbor's yard, and I'm going to be able to hit these businesses. I have older kids. I have a 12- and a 15-year-old. One of the reasons that I came to the planning and zoning is my 12-year-old is autistic. My 12-year-old lacks safety awareness. What is common sense to me and you is not common sense to my 12-year-old.
Jennifer, you have 15 seconds.
Okay, well, I'll come back in my three minutes on Scooters. Thank you very much.
There you go. Thank you. 500 Green Gauge Timber? Mary Scott?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Mary Scott. My address is 817 Upland Loop. I actually live on the other side of Streets of Caledonia, and I am super, super upset and oppose both the Dobbs and the Scooters. I am coming out to go towards Winghaven Boulevard when I leave in the morning, and I have been almost hit numerous times by the traffic coming from Double D in defiance. If we're going to be adding a Dobbs, Scooters, whatnot, it is not safe. I bought this home, I lived in Winghaven before, which was work, live, play. My husband works in the Streets of St. Charles, and we, along with all of our neighbors, were told this was going to be a community of green space. Bush Wildlife is across the street. O'Day Park is behind my house. There are ponds. There are deer. There are fish, turkeys. Having a Dobbs and a Scooter Coffee with that much traffic is not going to help anyone. Like mentioned before, there's three Dobbs within five miles of where we live. There's also lots of coffee shops. If you all could please find it in your hearts, along with all the children, the safety, it's difficult to even cross the street. My son plays with a kid across the street. We won't let him go there by himself. He's 13. People just are not paying attention. So if, like I said, please oppose both of these, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. That's the last speaker cards I have. Mr. Reed? Want to come back up? Any comments, sir?
The site is zoned C2. The surrounding site is zoned C2. When everyone purchased their homes, the site was zoned C2. The Dobbs, and we're talking about the Dobbs conditional use right now, is across the street from a gas station, a gas station, a bank, and an undeveloped commercial lot. It's at the hard corner of Highway DD and Caledonia Drive, and it's set up perfectly for a C2 use, which is what it's zoned. Additional C2 uses that could go in there, that would need no approvals, are liquor stores, tobacco uses, small engine repair, ambulance or fire stations, electric substations and hospitals. And we're proposing a Dobbs, so we feel that it's the neighboring property.
Okay.
I'd be happy to answer any questions. And it was obviously approved.
So we're going, before you go, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment for this item. So any other questions for Elliot? Seeing none. If you step aside.
Thank you very much.
We need to get through the bill first, and we'll bring you back up. It's Bill 7798. What was your first reading?
Goss Keller.
Kuskala.
Most by Kuskala, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. Councilman Kuskala, please present the bill.
Bill number 7798, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owners of Dobbs Tire and Auto to allow automobile and other motor vehicle repair services in a C2 general business district under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 708 Caledonia Drive within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Next is the public comment. Consider granting the conditional use permit to the owners of Scooters Coffee to allow a coffee shop with a drive-through in a C2 general business district under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 130 Dalriada Boulevard within the great city of O'Fallon, Missouri. Mr. Reed?
Good evening. Elliot Reed, Cockburn Engineering, 530A East Independence Drive in Union. 600-square-foot scooters, seven parking spaces, approximately 13 or 14 spaces for stacking for the drive-through, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Elliot on this one? Seeing none, if you would step aside.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Deenoff, do you want to speak on this one? And while he is coming up, I know most of you have talked about both of them, so I will give you the opportunity to speak again. So, I mean, if you don't want to, that's fine. We've already heard most of it. So I know the one lady's going to take her other three minutes, so. But again, you know, I have all these here, so I will give you the opportunity to speak if you wish to speak on the scooters. Mr. Deenoff?
Thank you very much, members of the City Council. I want to talk about this, some in particular things. First of all, again, this coffee shop is in the Caledonia, Streets of Caledonia Community Improvement District. You can all look it up online through the Missouri Department of Revenue and also the State Auditor's Office. The City Council created that entity. It charges additional sales tax, and so it's unfair. Puts our other economic business districts across our city on an unfair and uneven keel playing field. All these coffee stands, if you go from I-70 South to Caledonia, these coffee stands, they're all not going to make it. We're going to build this building. We're going to build this retail location. And then, I don't know if this one's going to be vacant or one of the ones in your other CID's, more taxing districts, there's going to be a vacancy because they all can't thrive and can't make business and create and generate sales tax for the city of O'Fallon. If you decide to approve this, number one, the neon signs need to go. The neon signs need to go. Some of these people behind me paid over $1 million in their dwelling, their home, and they're going to be faced and looking at these neon signs. There need to be crosswalks and to ensure pedestrian public safety for people. I believe it has a walk-up window. And I believe that there need to be appropriate crosswalks and appropriate ballards, and I don't see those on the site plan. Property values. You know, Mr. Woods, in his item to the Planning and Zoning Commission report, states that this is going to not impede adjoining property owners and is not going to decimate or lower property values. And I totally disagree with that. I believe the property values are going to plummet in this neighborhood. I lost a knife today. That knife was valued at $40. But some of these people behind me are going to lose hundreds of thousands of dollars in reduced property values. And Mr. Mayor, I don't believe you have a quorum. I think you lost a quorum of your meeting.
No, we're good.
You have a quorum?
Go ahead. You have 30 seconds.
So property values are going to plummet. I cannot support this additional coffee shop. This neighborhood needs some different opportunities. We have five or six staff members in economic development. We blew Costco in that big, large property that was going to pay $7 million along I-64. And so we need better opportunities and better things rather than a coffee shop and a tire center. I'm opposed to this project.
Thank you. You wait? Anybody else? Come on up.
Go back to your map.
One, two.
Oh, I got to state my name again. Jen Dowling, 111 Downview Drive. Okay. The reason I'm very upset, I'd like for y'all to just take an opportunity to look at this map with me. A year and a half ago, my child was on a Wentzville school bus, and there was an accident in this roundabout on Double D as it came out of Dalriada Boulevard. The bus driver got in a wreck. My child, my autistic child, was on that bus, and little kindergarteners went flying. Some of the kids were hurt. Nobody was severely hurt. But there has been numerous accidents coming out of that roundabout. If you look, while the elementary school will come down into the neighborhood, the buses cannot go into any street that has a cul-de-sac because they can't turn around. So the elementary school will actually come through Dalriada Boulevard and come into the neighborhood off of Downview, and it comes up Castleford. But on Belford Way and Dalriada, that is where the middle school and high school bus drops off.